What we're going to do is we're going to have a study session first.
Are you on? Sorry. So what we're going to do first is have a study session with respect to the CIA, followed by public comment. And then we'll have a study session with respect to the presentation involving Adam Street Lyman Park, followed by public comment. So let's start with the CIA presentation. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Tom Bensel. I'm the managing director of the Culinary Institute of America here in Napa Valley. We're just here to show you some conceptual plans that we've been working on for a while for not only the Greystone campus, but also our dormitories on Pratt Avenue. So we wanted to put these out in front of you, hopefully get some feedback for you before our submittal to the city. So I will just walk you through it. And I apologize ahead of time, this at times will get a little bit possibly confusing because it's multiple phases through multiple projects. So if you want to stop me, stop me and I'll try to explain the best I can. So obviously, this is the two sites, the Greystone campus and to the right of the screen, the Pratt Avenue property. This is the Greystone campus. So our plan, and we've been working on this for a bit, is a facility redesign and remodel. We will propose to dig storage tunnels and a fabrication classroom. We will convert the current Wine Spectator Greystone Restaurant to a student commons and dining hall. We'll relocate the restaurant to the Williams Center, which is the small gatehouse when you first come on the campus property. We will relocate our staff from the Education Department on the third floor to the first floor. We will then use that space to relocate our bake shop, which is on our third floor teaching kitchen. We'll do a complete remodel of the teaching kitchen and also build a special events kitchen. So that's the project for that building. How we do that are in several phases. The first phase is to start and complete a tunnel construction and storerooms. The fabrication class would be on basically, I think that there's a, if I can, that's not going to work. It's basically in the middle bottom of that page. You can see next to new roll-up doors to the left, there's currently an office in that space that'll convert into a fabrication classroom. That's a specialized classroom that we use. We want that to be near storage and where the receiving dock is. The rest of those tunnels that we will build will be used for dry storage. At the same time in the phase, we would be adding some storerooms and workshop offices that are currently on our first floor that house our repair and maintenance facility teams, workshops and offices, storage for cleaning supplies, et cetera, to the back of the building. Currently, we have some decking that's built back there. And what we intend to do is to add additional steel superstructure there and be able to drop on, for want of a better term, a double wide type of building. And we would use that for office space for our safety and security teams, the maintenance team, and also workshop for them. And in doing so, we would also go up to the second floor where the Wine Spectator Greystone Restaurant is. That's the shaded area there where it says student dining. That would be converted from the restaurant into a student dining hall, also a student commons. And additionally, where the special events kitchen right now is a classroom, we would be converting that into a special events kitchen to remove that from the third floor kitchens so that the special events team, which are professionals, aren't intermingling with our students that are in our degree programming. Plus, it's also more convenient for them because the barrel room is right across the hallway there, so it's a lot more convenient and more efficient. As a sub-phase to this, and that's after we get those previous slides done, we go down, back down to the first floor. We demolish all of the existing storerooms, the workshops and offices that are down there, and we build new offices for our faculty, our staff, and open floor plan offices. And additionally, add a student commons learning center currently where our administrative offices are at this time. Once that's complete, and we need to complete that first phase, and I'll come back to this, but once we complete that first phase, then we're able to go up to the third floor. The area that says baking and pastry, that is currently where our education offices are, our faculty and supporting staff. Once they're moved down to the first floor, we would then demo that area and we would build a brand-new bake shop. Currently, the bake shop is on the north end of the building and shares space with our culinary teaching kitchens. The idea being is, once we now build that bake shop, we can go to the current teaching kitchen and where, all the way to the right there, the skill development and garmanger area, we would be able to build that without interrupting the educational, the academic calendar because we would still have the teaching kitchens that are currently in place in those three areas that say specialty kitchen, à la carte kitchen, and multi-use kitchen. That's currently our old teaching kitchen that's currently being used. The bake shop now is to the south of the building, and we can now build three new kitchens in the north end of the building while still holding classes. Once we're done building those three kitchens, we would then move over and build out the multi-use kitchen, the à la carte kitchen, the walk-in storeroom specialty kitchen because we would have allowed ourselves to have three kitchens, continue to have three kitchens. Now, this ends up giving us six kitchens, which is our intent to create a better working environment and a better educational environment for our students, more similar to our Hyde Park model. The teaching kitchen would still remain open as it is with the high ceilings and not walls separating the kitchens out, but currently, it's a little bit crowded. It can get a little bit noisy and crazy, and it's not the best learning environment for our students. We feel that this is a definite upgrade for the student experience. The completed third floor plan looks like that. The area that's not shaded is the current Ventura Center. That is classrooms and meeting space. The walls in those classrooms come down. We hold our graduations. We have a graduation this Thursday that will be held in there, our industry conferences, et cetera. So it's a multi-use space. Before I go on to the dorms, I want to just kind of jump back, if I could, to the move of closing the restaurant and moving it down to the gatehouse, to the Williams Center. We are proposing and looking to staff to allow us to be able to do that element of this as well as the tunnel construction in advance of the major project. What it does, it just gives us a bit of a head start. It's kind of moving boxes around so that we have some open room to be able to do it. It gives us the ability, if we can, and we have plans to submit right now, it gives us the ability to open up that second floor area and get work done, which would positively impact the speed at which we could do the phasing of the third floor. That's the work that we, if you want, I can jump on a Pratt, or if you had a couple of questions about that, I can answer them before we jump over to the dorms. But that's the extent of what we're looking to do on the Greystone campus.
Please jump over to the dorms.
Okay. So this is the, would be the site plan, the proposal of what we intend to do on Pratt Avenue. Again, it would work in phases, but ultimately, we would look at the demolition of Vineyard Lodge One. This is the former Marlinda facility, the older building that's there. It's not a real efficient use of square footage. We would keep the existing Vineyard and a reduction of 41 beds. We would keep the existing Vineyard Lodge Two. That's the two-story building that's there that has 60 beds in it. We would propose constructing four new lodges for an additional 176 beds, which would be a net gain of 135 beds. Total beds on the property would then be 236. We have a, what we call the guest house on campus, the on-campus dormitory, which has 38 beds currently for a total student housing of 274 beds. So that is our plan moving forward with housing. What that looks like is multiple phases. That's the current site. You can see the tan roof is the old Marlinda facility. The kind of angle, the building in the, near the top of that triangle is what we call Vineyard Lodge Two, and then the parking lot. So what we are planning on doing is, over time, we would, if you look at the, more of the top of the screen there, which would be the east end of that property where the parking lot currently sits, we would work this in two phases. The first phase being to level that parking lot and have prepared to build two lodges. Once we build those two lodges, we would then move the students that are in the current Vineyard Lodge One, which is the old Marlinda facility, over into those lodges, and then we would build two more, and that would be the net increase for our beds. The, I just want to point out, the little blue building there on the left is, this is an earlier proposal, is not going to be there, that we were looking to try to place kind of a student commons or exercise room and things on the property. That's, a spot doesn't work for us. Our sewage, storage tanks are right there, and we can't quite build on those. Around the perimeter of the four lodges would be the parking, as well as at the very top of the triangle would be additional parking as well. The, you can see a little bit closer of where the parking is and the roundabout and the traffic flow, how it works around those. In between the four would be basically a garden area, an open area where the students could be outside. And this would be the, your basic layout of the first floor. So each of these lodges, it's more of a community-type building environment. You have a central kitchen and living area that the students come to, a combination of single and doubles with shared baths on each of the floors. This would be the first floor model that would have the kitchen for that particular building, a porch. Second and third floor would look similar to this, again, with a kind of balcony porch outside, a lounge area at the center of the, kind of pod, so to speak, and then singles and doubles around that. And that would be both the second and third floor would look like that. The visual of and elevation of the building would, and style that we're proposing would be similar to this. And that is our housing.
Okay. Now, are there any preliminary comments from members of the council before I open it up to public comment?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just had a couple of questions. One, have you done an analysis on, is there a potential increase in water usage with the remodel up at Greystone?
We, one of the things that's not mentioned in there is with the movement of office space in the estate, we are actually moving people from the Greystone facility down to our new Copia facility, so there'll be a reduction in headcount of staff. Additionally, with moving the restaurant, which is a 230-seat restaurant that's open pretty much seven days a week, 363 days a year, to a student-run restaurant in the gatehouse, becomes a 50-to-60-seat restaurant that's only open 180 days a year. So a pretty significant reduction both in headcount and in the restaurant usage. We, we're looking to be neutral on this. We're also, in doing all of this remodel, we're getting rid of equipment that's anywhere from 10, 15, 20 years old, that's not water-efficient, you know, dish machines and things like that. We're going to a central dish room that will, that'll basically take care of both the second and third floors, and that will replace four operating dish machines right now that are old and use more water than they should. So we've done an initial analysis. We look to now have someone come in and do a little bit more as far as what type of equipment we should be putting in place that's more water-saving. So our goal is to be neutral on water use.
Okay. And then with the dorms, I mean, same question with water, but also I think we should look at what the impact of sewage onto, I would assume that our sewer runs over to Cronella, the pump station, which is already being upgraded for Los Alcoas, but 135 more rooms.
Well, beds, but yeah.
Beds, well, still the same.
People, yes, I get it.
Still the same.
Well, yeah, and we've looked at that, and we've actually had conversations with staff over the last year and a half, two years, just to get their feedback. And we have four solutions, or four options that we're able to offer, and I think that of those four, we feel that one of them will be very workable, that we have enough storage on property that we can time how we move that to Cronella at whatever the city decides is the best time and place to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I just think that those are things that we need to analyze, you know, through the permit process.
Absolutely. We felt that water and sewage were the two big, and we don't have that issue at Greystone, but with Pratt, we've been looking at that very closely for the last couple of years as we started this process out.
Okay.
Just to follow along with that, the issue of wastewater capacity, what's the current option that you use for wastewater?
For the Pratt Avenue dorms or the?
Either both, yeah.
So Greystone, we actually, our waste goes across to a pond on the Markham property, so we have no issues there. There's plenty of capacity, and we don't see that being an issue for us at all. With Pratt, again, we have, we feel in the analysis that we had done, and we'll be submitting that with, you know, with permitting, we feel that there's plenty of storage capacity onsite for what we're proposing. It's a matter of how the city wants to move that and at what time they want to move it.
Is the anticipation that the capacity will need to be increased on the dorm site?
Well, there's more people, so obviously, there would be an increase. But we feel that, again, with what we have available and the timing that we can work with the city, that there wouldn't be, in initial conversations, there didn't seem to be an issue as long as we could time it properly.
Talk a little bit about the number of students that are at the school now and whether you anticipate a significant increase in student capacity and whether that's allowed under your use permit.
Under use permit, right now, it's not. This would be part of an entire package that we put forward to increase the student population per the use permit.
Are there numbers that you can share?
We are currently at 200. We'd like that number to be in the 3 to 350 range.
Is it fair to state that the CIA rents homes in the community already to house students?
Yes.
Okay, how many and how many?
Currently, within St. Helena, we rent eight houses, and I'm renting nine, two-bedroom apartments in Napa at the Montreche Apartments, which is like an executive apartment housing.
Are those?
And the reason we did that was because, and we've never done that before. This is the first year that we've done that, and the reason we did it is because housing has become such an issue that our students are having, our returning students, because we only guarantee housing to our first-year students, our returning students were having such a difficult time. They were finding housing further and further away, and it impacts the stress level of the students. So we're doing this, to be perfectly honest, we're renting these houses at a loss.
Would you, I assume that there would be a decrease in the use of those houses in the community if the dorms were?
Our intent is to get out of renting houses completely. It's not a good business model for us.
By the way, are those short-term rentals or are those 30-day rentals?
No, one-year leases. One-year and two-year leases, that we're not doing any VRBS, I promise.
I guess, just a philosophical question, I could see the benefit to the company and to the students and an indirect benefit in terms of the supply of folks who are in that industry, in this industry, to the Napa Valley. Talk about the benefits to, what's in it for the city of St. Helena?
Well, you know, I think that as a community partner, I think the school has proven over the years from when it was first built, and there were concerns, that over the last 20 years, that we hopefully are considered a good neighbor. We, you know, we try to be as active in the community as possible. This Sunday, we held a, you know, we gave up the space that we have at no cost, provided food and beverage for the Valley Fire Auction for the Valley Fire Victims. We do our holiday events. We support different schools and nonprofits throughout the valley. So I think from our position as a nonprofit college that we respect and try to assist wherever we can with that. As it pertains to St. Helena, I think that it's a, you know, I think it's an addition and a, and, you know, from my opinion, something that is of value to the community because people know us, they come to see Greystone. I think we've done a very good job in stewarding the building and putting something in there that's vibrant where people can come and visit it. We have a lot of people that come and stay in local hotels and play and pay TOT taxes. We hold industry conferences, 12 industry conferences throughout the year, housing anywhere from 100 to 200 to 500 people that come up and fill capacity in St. Helena and spill out beyond that. So, you know, I think that from a business perspective, it's not just our students. There's quite a bit of activity that goes on in Greystone that I think has positive impact as it relates to the city and revenues that it can generate. Plus, I think that we're, I hope that people believe that we're a good neighbor. Thank you.
All right. Let me open it up to, you can sit down if you like, Mr. Bensel, and let me open it up to a public comment. Is there any public comment with respect to this?
Can I just stand here and ask my question?
No, I would prefer you to come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Faith Echtermeyer from St. Helena, and I have a question. Can you please clarify for me, is the CIA nonprofit or not-for-profit?
Why don't you direct your questions to us, and then I'll have him back to answer.
Oh, okay. All right. Is the CIA nonprofit or not-for-profit? And is there a difference?
Well, I'll have him answer it in a minute. Are there any, is that your, just?
That's my question.
Okay, we'll answer it in a minute or two. Go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions, Donna Hines, and I actually have a property that we own, my husband and I, just on Pratt Avenue, right at a diagonal to the proposed dorms. And so one question is, is if you're adding 135 rooms, how much additional parking will be added to handle the additional students there? I also had the same question that Peter had about the sewer capacity. And I have a little bit of concern about, the building's not there anymore, but it appears to be a three-story. It appears to have big massing, and based on this diagram, it appears to be fairly close to Pratt Avenue. I can't tell the distances on this project, but I mean, it's somewhat of a, you know, vineyard area, and there are neighbors that live in that area, and I'm just a little concerned about the massing close to the street and the height and the three-story size of the structures.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comment? Yeah.
Yeah, Rusty Hines, my wife Donna. My concern is more of a timing, in addition to what Donna said, timing standpoint of when these four lodges would be proposed, whether they're in one phase or two phases. So just kind of like to know that. Thank you.
All right.
Jeff Ellsworth, Sylvaner, and I'm wondering if there was a traffic study that goes along with the building so that we can understand if, how it would impact traffic on the intersections of both Pratt and Main and Pratt and 29, and then the traffic flow for the neighbors in the area? So I'd hope that would be addressed. Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment? Let me, let me close public comment, and let me reverse it. Mr. House, will there be a traffic study?
Any discretionary action requires analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act, and traffic is one of those areas that gets analyzed, and so we would most likely require a traffic study for a project of this scale.
All right. Mr. Bensel, can you return to the podium?
First of all, with respect to Ms. Echtermeyer's question, not-profit and non-for-profit, I assume there's no distinction that you are a 501(c)(3).
We are a 501(c)(3), yes.
All right. With respect to the 135 additional student rooms, there was a question as to whether that would require additional parking. Do you have some method of moving students from the dormitories up to the facility that doesn't involve them using their private cars?
Yes, we do. Any student that's living on student housing is not allowed to drive their car onto the Greystone campus. They are required to take a shuttle. We have three different shuttles of different sizes, a 14-person shuttle, a 22-person shuttle, and a 32-person shuttle, and we schedule those out based on peak demand. The parking that's currently on the Pratt site is about 72 spaces. Our proposal is to go to 110 of the 72 that we have. We issue parking permits to our students, and we're at capacity on Pratt Avenue, and we've only issued 53 parking passes for students. So we're seeing a trend where more students are not coming with a car. We've actually had a, kind of like a Zipcar, we do it through Hertz, where it's an on-demand car, and that's one of the things that will also be available when we get to that population.
All right. And there was a question about sewer capacity, but I think you've addressed a sewer capacity.
And it's, you know, Chuck was able to point it to me, it is pre-treated as well before it's, before it's sent on to Cronella so that, so the impact is slightly less as well.
In any event, however the sewer issue is resolved, it's going to be resolved through discussion with our public works department for satisfaction.
Yes.
All right. And then there was a question about massing of the building, but again, I assume the building will go through design review with the planning commission, and that's really the appropriate place for that to be addressed. All right. Timing. There was a question about timing. That dealt with the four.
Sure. Well, you know, yesterday's better than today, but realistically, we'd like to be able to complete all the projects prior to 2020. So probably within, you know, a two-and-a-half-year time window is the probably most realistic, potentially. I don't see it being much faster than that, considering everything that we need to do, and then the phasing of it as well. So it is a project over multiple years.
All right. I think that covers the questions. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Are there any further discussion by council?
Just another question, just another question. What is the commitment that the CIA is going to make to the community in terms of allowing nonprofits or others to use the buildings in some fashion? Is there a commitment on your part, or has there been a commitment to, for example, have an event in the barrel room for a reduced charge or those kinds of things where there's some synergy between the community and the CIA where the community can also, the community as a residence can take part in this jewel of a property?
Sure. We, and we currently do that. We have, we have a nonprofit rate, so any nonprofit that comes to us, both at Greystone and at Copia, has a significantly reduced rate for facility fee. There are instances where we waive it 100%. And we try to, we have a small committee that names. And, and we try to, we have a small committee that now is becoming a little bit of a bigger committee since Copia came online to, and it's, and it's basically staff that live in the community that, that help guide us on those nonprofits and other groups that come to us and ask us for facility use. So we, we do that quite often.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further comment? Any further comment by council?
Nope.
All right. My only comment would be that the CIA is obviously a very important part of our community and subject to thorough reviews by the city with respect to the issues that have been raised, and I'm sure there are other issues. I don't, at least at this point, have any significant objection. It seems to me that what they're doing is in the interest of their business, in the interest of their students, and, and as far as I'm concerned, good luck with it. Any further comment? All right. That takes us to our next item at our study session, which is the Adams Street-Liman Park presentation. So let's start with the presentation, and then we'll take public comment. And I might say on this one that all members of the council have been flooded with emails, I think, in the last two or three days, so I think we've seen much of everybody's perspective, but that doesn't exclude that there might be additional perspectives to be presented here.
So, may I begin?
Sure.
Hello, I'm Andy Bartlett, 1286 Hudson Avenue. Mr. Mayor, council members. I've lived in St. Helena for a little over 20 years, practicing law as a business attorney, been a member of St. Helena Rotary for 14 years. I've spent several seasons coaching under-12 girls soccer. Both of your younger children, Kelly and Andrew, graduated from St. Helena High School, so I think I can now refer to myself as a genuine local. Last September, five of us started meeting informally for breakfast on Monday mornings to discuss the financial problems of St. Helena. Some of us knew each other, some did not, but we'd written letters to the editor about mutual concerns. Our backgrounds are in business, our concerns are civic. None of us have any financial gain in our proposal, just hometown pride in making St. Helena a little more connected as a community and more stable in its finances. And we've worked on a complex problem, how to address the community visions that were created in 2008 and 2009, sometimes referred to as the Civic Heart Study for St. Helena, calling for substantial but unfunded community projects. At the same time, how do we secure St. Helena's financial future, both short-term and long-term? We've discussed this with many community groups, several hours with Citizens Voice, an hour and a half with our town, St. Helena, shorter half-hour discussions with the boards of the Historical Society, Friends of the Library, Chamber of Commerce, Parks and Recreation Committee. We appeared before the Ad-Hoc Revenue Committee, and this is our second appearance at a study session of the council. This is a complex problem with many moving parts and many issues still to be resolved. Nonetheless, in one sentence, here is our ask to you, the city council. Move the Adams Street Civic Heart vision to Main Street, creating a multifaceted community plaza on Main Street with an expanded Limon Car, Limon Park green space as its center. That's it in one sentence. That's our ask. So, thank you. Oh, but I do have, I have a PS. We, we timed our presentation yesterday at a dress rehearsal, so I would hope that you would continue to listen to us for another 19 minutes, precisely.
Sure. Granted. George?
George Calery, and it is 2202 Diamond Mountain Road. I have a PhD in architecture and have taught at two universities. I have also been an associate professor to the doctoral program at the USC Building Research Institute. But most important in this framework, I have a widely recognized record as a slow-growth advocate. But slow growth does not mean no to everything, nor does it mean stifling the imagination. There is a malaise inflicting the most beautiful small towns in the world, which eventually destroys them. From the island of Silt in the North Sea, which has the highest home square foot price in all of Germany, to the island of Santorini on the Aegean Sea, it has torn out the civic heart of these communities. In Silt, its two elementary schools closed within a space of a few years, and residents on both islands told us they no longer recognize the people across the street. For them, their communities are lost forever. Make no mistake, similar clouds are gathering over our own valley. The recent study by Schrader and Associates identified the same downward spiral in school attendance across the Napa Valley, projected to last at least the next decade. This is not a fiscal issue, it is an existential one. Tourism, with all its problems, is not the primary cause of this. Even if we provided not one single hotel room in St. Helena, our 3.3 million visitors a year would still be charmed by our town and by second homes here, as they are doing. It is the part-time residents with no stake in our community who hollow out its social core. In the process, they reduce the town to an exclusive wine, food, and shopping experience. This is not a real city. We can sit back and watch our slide towards a Silt or a Santorini, or we can shape the future in a way which will motivate the part-time residents to eventually put down roots over the next decades. This will require a quantum leap. We must work towards a town with a beating civic, civic heart for a new generation of residents who are confident and motivated to raise their children here, and a town interesting enough for these children and the young to want to live here. We need to provide more opportunities for people to be part of a community other than Safeway, Sunshine, and Steve's Hardware. We must facilitate civic engagement in gathering spaces, exhibition halls, outdoor cafes, can see one, and music venues. Consider that Limon Park is used for a handful of, of events each year, when it should be a daily outdoor experience full of people surrounded by compatible venues. Our institutions, library annex, historical society, et cetera, which make our community a community, must be brought out of, from, from their backstreet hiding. The vision of a community beating heart is not something the five of us invented. It was born six or seven years ago from the work of 17 citizens and the input of scores of others who recognized the fading St. Helena community experience. Unfortunately, no financial model was devised for it, and you hear about it from the next speakers. Thank you.
George David, 451 Pope Street, Mr. Mayor, council members. St. Helena has a one-time opportunity to capitalize on the true value of the Adams Street site and create a legacy of experiences for generations of our citizens. Adams Street is undoubtedly one of the best sites for a luxury, full-service resort hotel in the United States, and the Napa Valley is one of the strongest resort hotel markets in the nation. According to three national sources, three of the 25 best resort hotels in the U.S. are in Napa County, Auberge, Calistoga Ranch, and Bardasano Inn. An Adams Street resort can compete with or exceed the results of these icons, two of which enjoy an average daily rate in excess of $1,000 a day. Adams may sell for up to $25 million if zoned for a luxury resort hotel with no more than 100 rooms with a small boutique winery. Zoning should allow development of a traditional hotel or a condominium hotel. City government support must be evident and clearly stated in the sales listing agreement. You may question our $25 million figure, but please review carefully the detailed 2015, 16, sales, luxury sales resorts, results found in the sales comparisons delivered to you and as part of our presentation. The resorts include Calistoga Hills, Bardasano Inn, Vintage Inn, and Velagio, Calistoga Ranch, the Napa Oxbow Site at 5.98 million per acre, and St. Helena's Best Harvest Inn. These sales support a compelling argument that our estimate of $25 billion is well within range. I make this statement based on my 50 years of full-time development and financial advisory service in the luxury hospitality sector nationally and internationally. Few buyers that acquire ultra-luxury properties will participate in an open-market RFP. They require direct negotiations with the seller in a confidential manner through trusted agents. I want to emphasize that every Napa sale I referenced was accomplished by listing the property for sale through a worldwide advisor, Estill Secured, CBRE Real Estate, or Jones Lang LaSalle. To achieve optimal financial results requires worldwide marketing efforts by consummate professional sales team with proven contacts and direct relationships with purchasers of ultra-luxury properties, not an RFP process. So what else do these advisory firms provide to their clients? Advisor exclusively markets hospitality properties in accordance with a detailed listing agreement that specifies the terms, conditions, and limitations set by the city. The property will be marketed to targeted and qualified prospects through a network of sales offices and affiliated firms around the world. Advisors' contacts include investors, hotel companies, developers, construction professionals, and other brokers assuring broad exposure of the opportunity. The city would receive valuable input in structuring the offer, which would be featured in a professional offering memorandum usable universally. All negotiations occur under confidentiality agreement with agent liability for misrepresentation. The city receives a focused analysis of offers from knowledgeable professionals. The city would have access to hotel-specific negotiating skills in dealing with sophisticated prospects. The advisor brings knowledge of sales competition and is aware of specific results obtained by other sellers. The advisor knows his client, how they do business, and what they expect. They know development professionals who can partner with prospective investors, increasing the possibility of a sale. The advisor has knowledge of equity and debt sources who may aid in enabling the sale. As the exclusive listing agent, they manage other brokers, saving city staff time and controlling information. The listing process saves valuable city staff time throughout the process. In listing Adams Street, you need to carefully dictate the conditions of sale and development to create an optimal near-term sale, and yet set demanding long-term standards to be met by the purchaser. You need to protect our gains, as a low-impact 100-room resort can contribute estimated, estimated initial fee income of $2.94 million and annually recurring tax revenue of $2.67 to $3.19 million. No other city-owned parcel can be sold and produce half of that result. Net sales proceeds should be legally sequestered to assure construction of the St. Helena Community Center. The city should employ an experienced full-time hotel development professional to represent and protect the city's interests, working with the development team but with independent authority. As a part of this process, a cap should be placed on the number of hotel rooms to assure that we do not become outfilled and we protect our core hotels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on finances here.
My name is Mike Thomas, 2170 Palmer Drive, St. Helena. Part of my retirement, I had a 30-year career in commercial real estate, and during the last 20 years, I worked in commercial real estate finance, as a principal in two prominent San Francisco mortgage banking firms, and independently in my own company. Most of my activity was in Silicon Valley, involved in major transactions, seeking both loan financing and joint venture equity financing with large institutions, including life insurance companies, banks, real estate investment trusts, and pension funds. Two points I would like to make. First, I feel the sale of Adams Street's parcels, financial benefits analysis which you have received, using a $25 million sales price and stabilized average daily room rates of $900 in the year 2020, when we figure the complex will be completed and up, is achievable based on activity in the local market area. Impact fees of approximately $3 million and tax revenue, including TOT, property, and sales taxes totaling over $3 million annually, is based on city fee and tax rate information provided by the city. You also received a financial analysis entitled Rebuild St. Helena: 10 and 20-Year Pro forma, which projects four different sale and development scenarios. Plan one is building the 2008 Adams Street Vision on Adams Street Parcel and selling the City Hall site to a developer, hotel developer. Plan two through, and three are various development scenarios under the RFP process. Plan four is our proposal of selling Adams Street to a five-star developer, hotel, resort developer, and building the Civic Hall and the Community Center on the City Hall site and Limon Park. Our plan provides over $38 million of plus, a surplus revenue over 10 years and builds the Civic Plaza. Plan one does not provide enough revenue now or in the next 10 years to fully develop the 2008 Adams Street Vision. And the other three RFP, two RFP plans do not generate near-the-net revenue after construction costs that our proposal does. Second point. During my career, I have prepared numerous presentations to seek financing and in some cases, sales to major investment sources. These presentation packages consist of 20 to 30 or more pages of commentary, plus supporting attachments. It's an involved and laborious process. For that reason, I don't ever recall preparing a complete presentation without an exclusive arrangement with my client. I required a commitment from my client to show a prospective lender or buyer that I had authority to represent him. My presentation needed to show that I had done my homework independently of the borrower or the seller, as the case might be. A proposed RFP on Adams Street does not allow anyone to seek a buyer with any direct authority to represent the city, nor does the RFP show the city's commitment to a sale. It could even be perceived as a seller testing the market. It is not a proper selling approach on a sale of this magnitude. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Caldwell?
I guess I'm the closer. Mayor, council members, city manager, staff. I knew you couldn't wait for the slideshow again, so I'm back. Anyway, I'm here to talk about the goodies. We've heard about the financial analysis and all the reasons for a civic center, and I'm going to have to blitzkrieg through this here. So it begins with the Civic Heart. So this is a view from the post office looking at our beautiful City Hall. That's a masterpiece, and there's Limon Park on the right. And what we envision is to make this into a kind of a park plaza flanked by two beautiful buildings that are set back into the vegetation, and so that when we drive by Main- and so that when we drive by Main Street, we read it as one big, beautiful, continuous park. That's the goal, is to make this thing absolutely gorgeous, something that we're proud about, something that we can't wait to go and visit and hang out and bring our relatives and our friends. So how did we get here? This is an aerial view of Lyman Park, the City Hall. Here, we've outlined Lyman Park, Fire Department, City Hall, Main Street, and now we've taken away the background so we can see the emphasis of Lyman Park. What we see here is not a very good Feng Shui matter of a park. It's like a hallway, a linear hallway that goes at an angle. I don't know how that happened, but something I wouldn't recommend from scratch. What we prefer to do, there's the bandstand in the middle, is to create this dynamic whereby the green zone is opened up so that you see more of a square inside, something that represents more of something you'd see in Hillsburg. We love going to Hillsburg because that beautiful little square and this feeling of containment as opposed to this linear model, which is kind of a, it's unsettling, this linear model, and you look, the expanse down the hallway, it kind of leads to nowhere, where this gives a sense of continuous, like a circle. It's got great energy around it. We put the bandstand up in the front. It could go in a lot of places, but I think it would be highly used. It could be absolutely gorgeous to see that bandstand in the front, and it balances out the two masses that we're gonna be talking about. The mass on the left is gonna be the Civic Center, and the mass at the top is gonna be the Recreation Center, which is on the Lyman Parcel. Here's the park expansion, I listed out. I won't go into detail, but it comes out to about 30% expansion of space. What's really critical is when you look at A, the little A there. That's what, that's the big thing, the secret about this, is when we move the police department and blow back the City Hall footprint to the left side, Lyman Park opens up, and that little A-zone has a lot of square footage. And it makes the park much more inviting and more central. So here's a delineation of Lyman Hall, Civic Hall. There's not enough time to go into it, but basically, they're, what they are, they're all the elements of the 2008 Adam Street Dream put into those two single buildings. They're both a double floor. The Lyman Hall in the back actually has a Sky Park on the rooftop. I went on the top of the Fire Department Tower, and I looked out there at the night. It's absolutely gorgeous when you're 30 feet up at Lyman Park looking at the beautiful sunset in the mountains. It could be the most spectacular Sky Park on top of the Lyman Hall that you could ever imagine. It'd be something we'd all want to go there and hang out. So anyway, this is the Adam Street Dream. This is the components of the dream. These are the components that go into our components on Main Street. And the funny thing about it is, we're almost matched the square footage. It's strange. I mean, we're off by 1,000 feet, but adding Sky Park, another 3,000. So this is a view of City Hall from the police station. Again, very, very striking, something to be proud of. And this is what we imagine dropping in the new Civic Center into this element, which is on City Hall property. So it's kind of like, do you like this, or do you like this? So here's a kind of a rendering of City Hall. This is my chicken scratch, kitchen table production of a drawing. This is not what we're recommending to build, but we have to have something to begin with, something to see to get motivated. We need to be motivated so that we can be inspired, so we can get this done. It's been so long since we've wanted a community center. We can't just keep kicking the can. We gotta get going. And we can't keep having this black tarp on top of the City Hall. We gotta take the tarp down and start building. We gotta start building something beautiful that we can all be proud about. And this is the great time. This is the entrance to maybe the Civic Hall. The idea is that you would approach a museum, a great place for the historical society, which they can recapitulate all the great stories of all the great families of Napa Valley, the Barringers, the Mendabes, the Neabombs, everybody else. And this would be great to take schoolkids there and on field trips for visitors to come see, just to come hang out and see rotating exhibits. We don't have anything like this. I mean, the historical society is tucked away in the attic of the library. That's crazy. So anyway, this is Lyman Hall. This is where we would have like performances, concerts, games. This is the fun place. I can easily see this is a great place for learning how to make watercolors. And you have the park right there. You could do drawing of the watercolors. We have a lot of great art, community groups in this town that could easily fit right into there, and it would be just a natural symbiotic fit. You can see the trees at the top. That's my idea of a Sky Park. And there's some people chatting in the Sky Park. So you can imagine, you can imagine having a fundraiser for the Rhonda House, which they have really nowhere to go for a fundraiser. You're downstairs, you have a big auction, a big square dance party. We all go up the elevator to the Sky Park. We have a cocktail. We look at the stars and we go, thank God we live in St. Helena. Yeah. So what does the Sky Park look like? Well, my wife and I, we drove down to Los Angeles last week, two weeks ago. That's not Vanna White. That's Karen Caldwell right there. And this is, this is a Sky Park in Los Angeles. This is a community table that I can envision the seroptimists going up there and drinking, having a good time, talking about their next fundraiser. That's a beautiful community table. This is the edge of the Sky Park, which is actually the Restoration Hardware. Look at that boxwood hedge for the perimeter of the Sky Park. And Jack, that's your concrete ping pong table right there. Anyway, Lyman Park needs TLC. I stole this from Jack's presentation. I'm sorry to plagiarize you. And these are photos, they're not doctored photos. They're just photos I kind of took randomly walking around. I'm not here in Desparza Park, but that guy's resting there, yeah. And, and so, you know, it could look better. It's such a beautiful piece of property. It could just be reinvigorated. We could tie it together into something big, something fantastic. It should look more like this, what you see in the Netherlands, or here what you see in Tel Aviv, or here what you see in Forest Park in St. Louis. It should have this magic, you know? Anyway, some people say, what about the trees? Well, send a tree company down to Los Angeles. They can move all kinds of things if there's an issue with, of the buildings. They move mountains, these people, and they have an amazing track record. Anyway, this is the pro forma that Mike talked about. I won't go into detail, but the bottom right in yellow, it says $38.4 million. That's the 10-year outlook if you go with the Rebuild St. Helena plan. The other ones are just totally trumped. This whole, this whole beautiful project gives us the goodies and gives us the money. We need the money. And who benefits from the community center? Everybody, teens, seniors, families, community groups, city staff, leaders, welcome visitors. I can go on about what goes on there, everything, weddings, bar mitzvahs, high school prom. Where's the high school prom this year? It ain't here. They gotta get in a limo, go to Yonville. That's embarrassing.
All right, can you finish up?
Yeah, I'm almost done. And so, performance venues? I mean, these are all the things that the library wished they had big space for. And this is the recreation. You know, I was thinking about fencing this morning. I was thinking about how cool it would be to learn fencing. I mean, you can, you can do this when you're 65. So these are the community groups, blah, blah, blah. If we sell the City Hall site, there's the City Hall in yellow, trouble. They can build right up to the lot line, and you could end up with this. That's my little shadow there on the right on Lyman Park. That's not good. What's good is, we want an optimum future quality of life, and we get there by selling Adams, building the community center, revitalize Lyman Park, and boost the city treasury. That's, that's the opening line. That's all of us right there, going to the opening line. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. All right. So, is it, everybody agreed we go for a public comment at this point? Let me open it up to public comment, and please keep in mind we've been exposed to a lot of public comment.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Salvistrin, and I'm speaking as a citizen of St. Helena and not for the groups that I'm affiliated with. As a long-term family that's been here for over 80 years, I love the concept that the Rebuild St. Helena has put forth today. And I wish that they would, could picture it on Adam Street where we decided that this should go many, many years ago. And I am hoping and praying that you do not sell Adam Street for the highest bidder to a resort hotel. It is not the place for a resort hotel. There is no reason why this can't be built where we wanted it in the first place and other development come in and do what you, the city, and the citizens would like to have on Adam Street. I know it's disappointing for me to say that, for a lot of people to hear me say that, but I debated on whether even to come tonight because I am so wanting Adam Street to be our St. Helena Civic Heart. That's where we belong.
Okay, thank you. Further public comment?
Hello, I'm Faith Echtermeyer, and I'm speaking for myself and also as part of Citizens Voice St. Helena. Just to give you a little history of the Adam Street property situation and its relation to the general plan and the debates that began in 1992 and 93. At the time of the first discussions, the Adam Street property was known as the Daily Property. Safeway had an option to buy it from the owners, the Daily family. Instead, St. Helena wisely purchased this beautiful land. The Daily Property was divided, until recently, into two parts. The west as commercial and the east saved as ag land. This was done to keep the entire five acres from being commercial. The general plan discussion of 1993 envisioned the Daily Property as being truly local-serving for St. Helena residents, since Main Street has been lost to tourism, in case we haven't noticed. Finally, Rebuild St. Helena says that it's time to realize the longstanding community vision for Adam Street. I personally do not believe our community vision ever included a resort hotel on this beautiful land. I say let's keep that type of development on Highway 29 only. This land was recently rezoned. I don't know if any of you were aware of that. It was preserved for 23 years. However, within the past year, poof, it's gone. The potential for it to be gone has happened. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Dahl. I live at 25 San Juan Court. I have to admit that the gentleman here who showed those beautiful pictures of Lyman Park was certainly prettier than the way Lyman Park looks now. But cities are defined a lot by their parks, and I think our Lyman Park could use a little better landscape, but it's quaint, it's beautiful, with a gazebo in the middle, and people love it. You know, I'm gonna go back to the city planning, the visioning process for Adam Street. There were six charrettes in which the citizens of St. Helena had an opportunity to come out and help develop that plan. We, the citizens, believed that after developing the vision for Adam Street and everybody participating in that, that the city council would carry through with it. You know, if the citizens can't count on the city council to carry through with what we, the citizens, ask for, maybe they can't count on us to vote for a property transfer tax. I don't know. I think it's pretty fair exchange. But I took a few more notes while these gentlemen were talking. Mr. David referred to a luxury hotel as a low-impact business. Please, it's anything but a low-impact business. It requires three employees per room, and I haven't heard anyone say a word about the affordable housing that's gonna house all of these employees. Now, in the Adam Street visioning process, there was a section of the Adam Street property that was devoted to affordable housing. And my saying this tonight is the first time I've heard that word. And then, in Rebuild St. Helena's literature, they say here that our figures show that any combination, et cetera, et cetera, won't work as well as their proposal, but you don't know this. You don't know what the figures are until you send out the RFP that's already been developed. It's ready to go, and it would be foolish to go along with this plan before you even see what you're gonna get from an RFP.
Thank you, Ms. Dahl.
Thank you.
Jeff Ellsworth-Silvayner. I believe all projects need to be analyzed and presented in terms of impacts as well as benefits. We hear about the benefits, but what are the impacts? If you're doing a lot of development in a small area, how does that impact our two-lane roads and our people getting through town, walking and driving and on bicycles? I also believe we should not seek or discuss any new projects, including through RFP's requests for proposals, until a forensic accountant that has been discussed is brought in to understand the true financial picture of the town. We need to know what happened here financially over the last number of years and where we truly are before we make decisions about how to move forward. Part of our problem also here financially has to do with development in the county outside of city limits that is impacting our town, and that needs to be addressed. Finally, I think it's important to bring up the disturbing fact that Napa County has the highest rate of cancer in the state for children. The highest in the state. It has the second highest rate of cancer in the state for adults, and we don't know why. And we need to know that immediately. We all need to be aware of this. And we need our elected officials to be pushing to understand the causes. Anytime we're talking about development, we have to talk about this. In Flint, Michigan, problems were ignored and things got worse. We do not want to go down that road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. Any further public comment?
Jack Oliver, Hudson Avenue, Class of '94, Go Saints. These are my views specifically to the Lyman Park piece of this proposal or any other proposals that the city would consider. I believe the city cannot and should not develop Lyman Park. It should not because it's not consistent with the past 100 years of use, thereabouts of the park, and it sets a horrible precedent for future gifts to the city. I believe the city cannot because it's restricted in the deed, and it goes against the intent of the original gift. But I have some ifs. If the city finds that it can afford to build and maintain a community center, and if they find one is needed, then build a community center, but don't put it on Lyman Park. Use another city parcel. Do a lot line adjustment, carve out space for it. Do a sale-leaseback agreement whereby the city gets to have a 100-year lease on a piece of land they sold to build whatever they want on it. Those are three, three big ifs in my view. I also want to, is it, does that project? I just want to put this picture up. This is just a picture of the park. So a few different pictures going around. We thought this was a nice one to show. There's also a few different definitions being kind of thrown around. So I wanted to read you the very first definition of a park in the Merriam-Webster Dictionary. Line number one, "A piece of public land near a city that is kept free of houses and other buildings and can be used for pleasure and exercise." And by buildings, I think gazebos, amphitheaters, open air are okay. There's some great definitions from the Community Toolbox Group, which is an online resource to promote community health, that defines parks and the type of parks found in the type of cities. So we're not talking about LA or New York or London. Those are urban parks. We're not talking about county or regional parks like we have out of city limits. We're talking about what they call a small-town park. Let me read you their definition. "Many small towns include a Central Park area, often in the northeast, the former Town Common, with benches, perhaps a bandstand and a flagpole, a simple, open space for town celebrations and gatherings. They may include athletic fields." So I think every park in town has a role, and I think that's the role that Lyman Park plays. I just have one last comment, which is a, two reviews. One is from AAA Travel Magazine, which says, "Lyman Park is a cedar-shaded pocket of greenery at the north end of the main's commercial zone is designed for anyone seeking a quiet rest." And this from Yelp, just to have something more current and hip. Five-star review, February 2016. "What a great peaceful park in the middle of town. They have plenty of picnic tables for a great picnic lunch outside. This park also hosts music in the park during the summer. Definitely worth a stop when you need to stop or a place to have your lunch." Definitely worth a stop when you need to stop or a place to have your lunch." Please leave Lyman Park a park. 100% park. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all right. Any further public comment?
Mary Stevenson, speaking as an individual. I actually admire this group of citizens for putting this plan together. I think it's a very ingenious plan. I can't say it's the best plan, but I think that the fact that these, this group of people who have great expertise and experience have taken this time and energy to bring a private party perspective to the future of our town. And I think they should be applauded for that, whether or not this project goes forward. But I also think that you can't say that this project has everything on it that we had in the visioning of Adams Street, which was done by the community several years ago, because no one has mentioned the word housing, workforce, incremental employees. And this is, was a major part of the visioning process. And if you put a 100-room hotel on Adams Street, you'll have a minimum of 200 new employees, incremental, mostly low-income employees coming into our town. And we don't have housing for our existing employees. So I think if the city sells Adams Street, it has to have a housing element in the sales process. It has to have a housing element in the RFP process. If we wait until the entitlement process to negotiate increased impact fees for housing, we have lost all of our leverage and we will die from a million paper cuts, just like we did on the Grand View project. We have something of great value here and if you're going to sell it, it has to have a housing element in it. The community sent a survey that you're going to look at tonight. You asked the community, "What is the most serious problem St. Helena has?" And the two top ones were street repair at 61% and cost of housing at 57. And if you take the statistical margin for error, those are neck and neck. So the community is telling you that housing is a big challenge and we are not including that in our strategic planning, in any of our asset management, in any of our economic development. And the citizens are telling you that that and the potholes in the streets are the most important things to them. More important than public, than police protection, more important than government transparency. I think that there's many possibilities for including housing in the RFP, which you've supposedly written. I haven't seen it. And one of them is to note in the RFP that workforce housing is a serious challenge for St. Helena and the proposals that include a, some answers to that challenge on Adams Street would be favored. Another would require that 20% of the land, which would be just a little over an acre, be reserved for workforce housing, which would give developers a four-and-a-half-acre piece of land in the center of St. Helena, which could be developed with a separate entrance on a separate street and no visual sightlines to housing. This, and there's several people on the dais here and in the audience who've told me, "Oh, no, no, you can't do that. You can't have poor people living next to people in expensive apartment, hotel rooms." But it can be done. It was done at Solage. It was done at Bardasano, which is sold for over $80 million, not including the land. It was done at Altamira's Place. You could also say that part of the gross sales of the, of the sale of the land, if you sell the land, has to go into the housing fund, 10%, 20%, whatever it is. But we have, I know we have the short-term and near-term, and I'm almost done, financial issues that you're dealing with. And I, and I understand that that has to be the most important thing that we deal with. But this is a long-term visionary issue and it gets worse every year. And if this council and our city staff doesn't start addressing the housing issues that we have as you look at these other areas that are going to have great impact on our town, then we're not just losing an opportunity, we're losing our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Tricia Westbrook and I'm also speaking for myself. I've lived in St. Helena for 20 years. I'm an organizational development consultant who works with architects, landscape architects, interior designers and engineers who have companies primarily in St. Helena, some in the Napa Valley. And over the last four years, I've hired nine exceptional young professionals for those companies. People who are just out of school, people who are early and mid-career. Wonderful, wonderful young professionals, some with young families, who are exactly the people that we need to come and breathe life into this community and to spend time in our schools and to really help us move forward. Every one of those people sat across from me at the picnic table in Lyman Park, where I held those interviews, and said, "I can't wait to work here and to live in St. Helena and to raise my family here." They live in Napa. They live in Santa Rosa. They live in Windsor. One of them lived in Fairfield for quite a while because there's no housing here that they can afford. And my clients are paying an extremely good salary that's commensurate with the entire San Francisco Bay area. So it's not just money, it's that there's nothing here. So I want to strongly agree with the gentleman who spoke first and talked about the fact that the second houses are sort of creating a hole in our community and to help us realize that the way to fill that hole is to find ways for these bright young people and these young families to come and live here. Because as it is now, they're on the PTAs and other places. They're volunteering to build playgrounds at schools in Napa. They're serving on boards in Santa Rosa and in Windsor. And as the person who brought them here, that makes me really sad. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Kathleen Carrick. I live at 1321 Stockton Street. I've been there for 36 years. I moved to St. Helena in 1980 and I came here because I was hired by the city as a recreation director. The very first budget session we had was the year after Prop 13 had passed. And we were in major crisis, financial crisis. Some of the things that were being proposed is we sell Carnegie Building. We do away with our police department and have the sheriff come and police our town through, the sheriff's department, through the county. I've seen waves of crisis for 30 years as a public employee. I was here when we fought Safeway going on to Adams Street. Here we were, St. Helena citizens, fighting a business that was actually going to be of service to us. But we didn't want Omega Safeway. We didn't want Adams Street to become a shopping mall. And so crisis after crisis, we've ridden through with the city and still Adams Street remains open to many options. We've got hotels going up at one end and we've got hotels going up at the other end of our town. We've got Carl DeManey's property possibly being developed. I think it's foolish of us at this time, even though we do have some financial crisis to address, to be throwing that valuable piece of property away to another hotel. That is the heart of our, of our town, Adams Street. And I just don't think we are in such a bad strait that we need to give away that, that valuable piece of property. I've been a proponent of a community center, you know. I've preached about community centers for 36 years and I'd love to see a community center built. But at the risk of putting in a 100-room hotel on Adams Street, I'd rather do without the community center. I just think that space can be used better. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Marty Bennett, Medrona Avenue. A relative newcomer, I don't have a longevity. Somehow I think we're almost like a family, squabbling over grandma's jewelry and deciding which piece we want to sell because we have to eat. I think it's important that we look at, 8.8% of people of our town live under the poverty level. 9% of working age St. Helena residents live under the poverty level. 6.8% of whites and 11.18% of Hispanics and Latino live under the poverty level. If we don't do something with this wonderful asset, will you then decide to raise taxes through raising the sales tax? 70% of people's income, in a world of retiring people, who their incomes have been really beaten up over the last years, 70% of their equity is in their homes. Will you then take it piece by piece from other people's pockets? People who need that money to downsize their living, move into a care home or take care of decrepited bodies and dental issues, which we all know happen. So, big choice. Do we have the trust in you to sell one of grandma's jewels in order to provide greater stability for everyone? I am sympathetic to the history. I think it's beautiful. I would love the cozy feeling of the park. I've taken my grandkids there and we played. But I think we have to decide what's best for everyone. We may have to step away from past agreements and wishes and hopes and dreams. I don't know how morally you cannot quickly come up with selling one of the major assets of this town so that we do not have to put what I consider unreasonable taxes on everyone, from the poorest to the richest. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? All right, let me close the public hearing and invite initial council discussion. And let me throw out a suggestion. I don't, we're not going to resolve anything here tonight. This is basically a listening session. But I would suggest that at our next council meeting, we put on our agenda the question of whether with respect to the RFP, we should put it out or bifurcate it, meaning dealing with qualifications and then seeing who comes in and says, "Hey, we want to think about this and do it." And then select who, who, who might be willing to take a good look at it and then, then go with the RFP later. Sort of a two-stage process. I'd like to see that on the agenda next time for discussion. And I'm particularly anxious that Mr. Pitts, who's not here tonight, be with us for that discussion.
I could try to get it on in the next one, but you know how busy and how many projects we have on our plates right now. So we could certainly shoot for April 12th, but I would, I would be concerned to make a commitment that we could get everything done and...
April 12th or the next one, whatever, sometime.
And over the next couple of council meetings.
All right.
I guess I'm a little bit unsure what you're asking, Ellen.
Yeah, I didn't understand the first part.
Well, my thought is that, is that we bifurcate the RFP process. Instead of having the qualifications of the potential responders be part of the RFP, that we get that out first, see who it is that comes back in and expresses an interest and then we cull that down and then from the culled-out list, invite further proposals. But that has the effect of, of not requiring such a large group, if it is a large group, to put a lot of time and effort into coming up with a full response to the RFP initially and gives us more control over who the responders eventually will be. That's my thought.
Except you're assuming that the council wants an RFP.
Well, I think we authorized that last, we already authorized the RFP.
I thought we were, I thought we put that on hold until after this study session.
You informally put that on hold, but I have formal council direction to move forward with that. And so that would be part of the, the direction tonight would be to bring that item. If, if nothing happens tonight, we would continue down that path. If you give me other direction and what I'm hearing is you'd like this, this re-agendize to reconsider the issuance of the RFP. I'm hearing that from the mayor only.
That's how I feel. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know that it's, and especially with Greg not here, I'm not sure it's a done deal that, you know, there's two, there's two sides to the story. You know, either we have an RFP or we don't. And the, the theory behind not is that we, if we do decide to sell that property, we would most likely see a higher price tag if we didn't do the RFP. I mean, that's what I'm hearing from this group. So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it's a done, I don't think it's a settled issue yet. I thought we were going to discuss it.
Well, my effort here is, is that, is that given the way the issue has come up, that I would suggest that we agendize precisely that issue at the next city council meeting.
I just thought the way you had first...
We can discuss it and I would like Mr. Pitts to be here as part of the discussion, quite frankly. He has far more background in this overall area than I do.
He may not be available.
Well, we're...
Legally.
That's fine. I just was wanting to make sure that we weren't already...
Then I would invite other discussion. I would ask that the council particularly focus on what has been the subject of a lot of email traffic, which is whether it's appropriate to consider putting a building called Lyman Hall on Lyman Park. Whether that's consistent with the intent of the gift. And the background there is that the deed which I have here, when this issue first came up, I called the recorder of deeds, it was some months ago, to get the deed. It says that, "That said party of the second part shall proceed to acquire and shall acquire the remaining undivided one-half interest in and to said property and shall dedicate the use, the entire property for park purposes, including its use for games, concerts and recreations." That's, that's the physical language of the deed. And the question is whether that, the idea of putting a, a building, a 12,000-square-foot building in the back of the park is consistent with that language.
That's a question for the lawyers, don't you think?
Well, I don't know that it is...
Games and recreation. You know, I don't know what the answer is either, but...
I, I think, I think, I think there's a policy issue here myself, not just a legal issue, but a policy issue which the council can determine, which is whether it feels that what is being proposed is consistent with that language.
Well, I, I think, I mean, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of letters wanting to leave Lyman Park exactly the way that Lyman Park is, maybe with some, some cleanup and, and dressing up. But I think, I think we need to go back to, you know, we had decided that we were going to put together an RFP to get some ideas from, from the, from the professional, I guess, community as to what could be done with either one of those properties or both of those properties. And I applaud, you know, this group for putting together the proposals that they've put together. But I, I also see this as just a beginning of, of a discussion that this community needs to have over Adams Street and, and City Hall property. And I don't think that we can have an honest discussion about the uses of those properties until we put out this request for proposals and get some other ideas in, in here. I, I mean, with all the letters that we got the last few days, I don't think our community is ready to just follow the lead from, from these five guys. And, and I think, you know, we start going down that road to where we just say, "Yeah, that's what we want to do. We're definitely going to put a hotel, you know, on Adams Street and we're going to hire a broker." I mean, that's what they're asking us to do, hire a broker to, to sell that property as that use. Then I think the whole town's going to go crazy.
I think it's fair to say that Lyman Park was not part of our initial thinking with respect to the RFP.
I don't think Lyman Park was even part of our discussion from the very beginning.
I guess the way I'm looking at it is, first of all, I do, it is, I, I did find it very refreshing that a group of private citizens got together and came up with a... very refreshing that a group of private citizens got together and came up with a positive plan, because usually what we have is negative reactions to things. And so I really, really commend them for coming up with a positive plan. We did get a lot of emails today about Lyman Park, and I, in some, in some instance, and they're, I completely understand what they're saying. I'll do, I do think that some of them were reacting to, they're going to get, they're going to build a building in Lyman Park without seeing the entire plan. But I also think that there's maybe a way to tweak the plan. There's that whole parking lot behind, I mean, there's maybe a way to tweak the plan so that you have the new City Hall, you have the community center, and maybe you don't necessarily infringe on Lyman Park. I personally do like the flow that Oliver had set up, but if that's, if it's important to the town not to have that, I think that there's probably space on the, on those, on those two parcels to make it work. And I'd love to see that happen. I mean, I, the realistic situation is, we can't finance any of this right now without selling Adam Street. So, it's really a moot point unless that happens. So, it's, it's complicated, it's, a lot of people have really, really strong feelings about both Lyman Park and Adam Street. In a perfect world, we would, we would build a brand-new City Hall police station right there, and it would be an amazing place for our fabulous staff to work, and we would have a community center and everything else that we envisioned on Adam Street. But we can't, we don't have the money for that. So, nothing is going to happen because we don't have the money unless we come up with some way to finance it. That's, that's just the reality of it. But I do, I do, I do love the fact of a community heart on Main Street. And it, it doesn't necessarily have to infringe on, on Lyman Park. It could, it could enhance it.
Mr. Doran?
Well, just to be clear, I received 47 emails in the last two days, and all in opposition of putting anything on Lyman Park. Some of them were short, some of them were lengthy, some of them were more in-depth in terms of the reasoning. So, that is a concern to me because it reflects to me that there would be a divided community. So, we have to be careful on that part of it. And I understand there may be reasons why, you know, those folks are rounded up, but I kind of, I guess I, I have agreement with both Sharon and Peter. I think we have, first of all, thank you for bringing the idea forward, because there are many intriguing parts of this idea, a lot of it, that I find interesting and that we should not just write it off wholesale. It seems to me that we can do it, well, an RFP is a little different when you have community public interest at stake. It's a little, it's different than the typical situation where you, you know, you just invite someone, they buy the property, they build it, we take the money. But because of the long history of wanting to use that property or one of the properties for the public interest, it seems to me it's difficult. I know that, that the gentleman who put this together don't want to hear that, but I, I think we need to test it and somehow build in to the RFP process the potential for a flat-out sale with nothing on it. Somehow build that in to the RFP process as, as an option. And there may be other options. I could see a five-star luxury hotel. I can also see a four-star luxury hotel with maybe something next to the library, maybe a civic building. I don't know. So, we have all these different various plans, and they may work out. But I think until we get consensus in the community, we are going to, it's going to be a long slog. And so I would, I would say, go forward with the RFP process, try to figure out a way to accommodate a peer sale, probably unrealistic, I understand that because I, I have some knowledge in this area. But because of the fact that this visioning process went on for so long and people have such high expectations of what we use this property for, I agree with Peter that we, or whoever said, if we just sell it outright without hearing from the public as to where these civic buildings should go, we're going to be in trouble politically and financially, and we're not going to get the, the support we need. We need to get a huge onslaught of support in whatever direction we go. So, that's kind of where I am with it. Again, I, I don't oppose a high-end luxury resort on the Adam Street property, frankly. I would like to see whether it's possible to put a community building on Adam Street, somewhere smaller, next, because I think it's incongruous to have this library just sort of sitting there all by itself and not having a civic building join to it. It seems kind of bizarre to me. I, I tend to not want to have anything built on Lyman, and I think it's important to respect the donor intent for past donors and future donors. So, I'm a little reticent to have something built in the back there. I think it's intriguing to raise the City Hall building and the Police Department and build a two-story building there, same footprint. I think that's intriguing. So, you can see there's, there's bits and pieces of, of, you know, what some perceive as all or none that we can maybe put together. Is it doable? Will, will some international hotel company come in here and say, yeah, we like to, we're interested in that? Hmm, you know, the chances are no. But I, I think I'd like to at least test it with the RFP, and if the RFPs come back and were, no, this is not good for our community, then we, we look at something else.
All right.
One, one other reality that we are going to be facing is the City Hall building. I don't know that it's going to last for five years. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty, like, it might get condemned in the next few years. So, I'm just throwing that out there as a reality that we are going to have to face because it's, it's been patched together for too long.
Well, my only final comments would be, I've spent a lot of time studying the language of the deed, looking at the dictionary definitions, and it would be very, very difficult for me ever to vote for a building of the size of Lyman Hall on Lyman Park. I believe it is inconsistent with the intent of the donor, and I believe we are honor-bound to follow the intent of the donor. I came to this thinking before I received, we received, included in our packet, the letter from the Luli Lyman stating that her family was very much opposed to a building on Lyman Park, but she's representing the family, saying that's not consistent with the intent of her grandfather, and I give that great respect as well. In any event, I think where we are at the moment is to reschedule this in a month or two weeks, get Mr. Pitts back here where he can't get off the hook. And I would like to explore the idea of separating out the qualifications from the RFP itself. I generally agree that, that we should go down the RFP road to see what our options are, but I'm not so anxious for us to go down the RFP road and get 20 or 30 proposals. I'd prefer to see who seeks to bid on it, whittle it down if that's appropriate, and then go forward from there.
Do you mind if I make a suggestion?
Yeah, sure.
So, when we started this process, we actually talked about it during your goal-setting in February 2015. And one of the things that you had authorized was an economic development director position. And, and the reason for that was, this is such a vital discussion for the community to have. Lyman Park and City Hall and the police station and Adam Street and the library and the historical community cultural center, all these conversations were happening, as well as what was happening with tourism, with economic development, with just the, the whole sort of future of St. Helena. And one of the visions behind hiring the economic development director was to start to, to bring that community conversation together and to have the community, again, talk about the future of St. Helena. And when we talk about economic development, we're talking about community as well. This is not just economic development and business. It really, the things that I heard today about revitalizing the community part of St. Helena would have been included in that conversation, because I had listed as some of the, of some of the tasks or duties of that individual was community programming or community conversations, as well as affordable housing as part of that whole discussion. What I worry about now is, so our next, so next, we were unable to fund that position. Council authorized it, I initiated a recruitment, we hit the big budget crisis that we hit for 15, 16, we cut $1 million out, including the funding of that position, and so we lost that. As we started to look at revenue options, Noah and I discussed Adam Street, we had a brief conversation with the council about it, future, about revenues and things like that. And so we thought, the whole point behind the RFP was to do exactly what we're seeing today, which is the beauty of the public process, is to have the community realize that a conversation needs to be restarted about Adam Street. And so we're there, that, that community, that conversation's starting to happen. The challenge that I'm having now is the things that you're asking me to do, we do not have the staff capacity to do. It's very complicated. I absolutely agree with the gentleman, the, these large deals, land development, land use, these kinds of things, there's excellent experts who have been doing this for years. What Noah and I had thought we would do through the RFP process is bring this conversation to the forefront. We issued a draft so we could tell the community, we're going to start talking about this. The conversation started, we had community members come forward and say, we think we have other ideas. That's fantastic. I think we're at a point that, that we can't do this at a staff level anymore. And so my recommendation would be that Noah and I work on a, on a proposal for council that's a little more comprehensive than just an RFQ, because I don't even know where to start with that, because in RFQ, you have to have a much better thought-through product than. Part of the RFP process was to say, what could possibly happen? Because we attached the visiting process to the RFP and, and threw it out there and said, you tell us what can work on this parcel. If you're starting to look for requests for qualifications, that, that's a whole nother approach. And so what I would recommend is that you give Noah and I the opportunity to go back and look at who and what we could hire from a firm, from a consulting standpoint, that could then help lead this discussion. This is a year-long process that's ahead of us now, and to do it right and to do justice to the community, do justice to this beautiful parcel, to deal with City, excuse me, with City Hall, and I agree, we're on a ticking time clock with City Hall and the police station, that, that we do that in a more thoughtful manner, and that would be my recommendation.
All right, that sounds, that sounds certainly acceptable to me.
That's fine, but I, I, I just want to clarify that I'm in agreement with Alan, that it's, it sounds like everybody, nobody wants to touch Lyman Park, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that I'm ready to give up on the rebuild St. Helena concept as long as the second building is not on the Lyman Park parcel. I don't know if that can be tweaked or not.
And that was my point, exactly.
Yeah, I've got no problem too, if it's not on the Lyman Park parcel.
I mean, it sounds, you know, there is, there is, there is, there is land behind the City Hall, or the City Hall could be three stories, I don't know, but with the roof, with the sky deck on the top of that.
My comment was limited to the Lyman Park parcel, because that's what the deed is about. All right, so, let's go down that road and, and see where we are. Thank you very much, everybody. This was a terrific discussion, and we all appreciated it. And we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Let me call to order the 6:00 PM regular meeting of the City Council, the City of St. Helena. We are at 6:30 because we had a study session that lasted a little bit longer than we anticipated, but so be it. Let me start with the pledge of allegiance. Would the vice mayor please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Galbraith?
Present.
Vice Mayor White?
Here.
Councilmember Doran?
Here.
Councilmember Kroll?
Here.
Councilmember Pitts?
Absent.
All right, public forum. Next item on our agenda is public forum with respect to matters not on our agenda, limited to three minutes. Mr. Ellsworth.
Jeff Ellsworth-Silvayner. I want to address the Adam Street zoning change that was brought up a little earlier. I just, I just heard about it. I did not realize it had changed. So, I believe there needs to be a better public notification on, on large issues like this. I know that most people were not aware, and I certainly wasn't. It's a big issue, and it's, if we understand zoning is one of our insurances of quality of life and property values, and this is an asset and an impact area that affects us all, so when, when major zoning changes happen, I think we really need to reach out and let the whole community know so we can, we can have the discussion. It, it pulls, you know, we don't, we have, we don't want to get into trust issues. We're looking at the oversight that, that missed a $1.9 million issue, and, and then to hear that things are, it might have had the minimal legal notification, but I think our community deserves to really know what's going on. And I agree that the Adam Street conversation is one that we need to have, and I'm, I'm glad we're having it. But I think the conversation should have started before the zoning change, because that's all part of it. And I, I honestly think that, that you should consider reversing the decision on the zoning so that we can begin the conversation at the beginning and go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. There really was quite a discussion with respect to it, to my memory, but would the city manager like to respond?
There were two public hearings for that item, one with the planning commission and one with the city council.
All right, thank you. Further public comment? Mr. Bennett?
Hello again, thank you, Martin Bennett, Medrona. Following up on the issue of taxation, I'd like to suggest that the city considers a $10 barrel tax on every barrel of wine that is made or bottled or processed within the city limits or the unincorporated area of St. Helena. This is approached for very famous whiskey in Tennessee because it was the sole owner operating company of that town. What's happened in this town, I believe, it's moved from very much the mill city town to the company town to now a corporation town or conglomerate town, where an industry, both the wine and hospitality industries, have such control over the development of our city. Our T of T takes care of hospitality, our normal taxes take care of our, some of our hospitality restaurants. But I think it is time for the people who bring so many visitors to our, our streets, our crowd our roads, bring our policemen out, cause accidents, that something be brought. $10 a barrel is not a lot. It's 3.3 percent per bottle. I don't think that's an unbearable amount of additional taxation to people who are getting the great value of our civic environment, our homes, our, the feeling of the city, and how we who live here as permanent residents, not secondary homes, not weekend homes, but people who live here try to maintain. So, I would like you to add that in. I know your, your committee didn't think of that, but maybe that's because they are very much associated with the wine industry. But as someone who only drinks the wine, I think a $10 barrel tax would add to our city revenues. I'm sure there's a lot to consider in terms of legality of that, but other towns have brought that forward in order to make their economies solvent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further, I do believe the committee considered all tax options that it thought were legal. Any further comment, public comment? All right, I'll close the public comment, and that gets us to reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. Ms. Phillips?
Nothing business-wise to report, just a quick reminder that March 31st, City Hall will be closed to recognize Cesar Chavez Day.
Ms. Metz?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to remind the council as well as the public about our May 4th workshop, it's our first budget workshop. It's going to be at the fire station from 9:00 AM to 4:00 to 5:00 PM. And in addition, we are going to be sending out a community survey in the next few weeks. It's going to go out via email, so please look for it so it can help our department heads with some of the budget priorities. Thank you.
Ms. Black? Mr. Brown?
Nothing from the city.
Mr. House?
I just want to remind the council and the public that the department is moving forward with finalization of the general plan document, draft document, General Plan EIR. Similar, on a similar path, but probably will be coming a little bit sooner, is the Hunter subdivision EIR. So, just let the council and the community know that those will be posted for public review and comment as a part of the secret process and then moving forward through the... review and comment as a part of the secret process, and then moving forward through the development review.
All right. Ms. Kroll.
Well, I was going to report out on the happenings at our Upper Valley Waste Management Board meeting yesterday, but we have Steve Letterer here today to give us a little update. The only thing I was going to add to his comments were that on April 23rd, in conjunction with Earth Day, there will be e-waste recycling and paper shredding next to the firehouse. So, the St. Helena High football players will unload your car and dispose of your waste for you.
All right. Mr. Doring.
Well, I do want to remind everyone, if you haven't already given big to the St. Helena schools, it's a good time to do so. There are a lot of signs around. I don't know what the website is. Probably St. Helena Give Big. Please consider giving something to the school district. One thing that's been on my mind for a while, and it's going to be hopefully a feature agenda item, is the having a discussion whether we should increase the public comment time by one or two minutes. So, I'd like to have that on it. No hurry, but every city and every organization does it a little bit differently. I'm noting a little bit of frustration from some people in the audience, and just like to have a discussion on that at some point.
All right.
I think that's part of a resolution, so it probably would need to, we'd need to review a resolution. I'm not sure.
It's part of the Council protocols, I believe, and so, staff already has that on the list to bring that back, because there are some inconsistencies in the way we operate functionally at Council meetings. And so, we can, that would certainly be something Council could review as part of your discussion.
You mean, as hard as I try to follow the rules, I'm inconsistent? That's okay. Mr. White. My only comment relates to the Napa Valley Transit Authority, Transportation Authority, excuse me. That is that there is something called, quote, "Try Transit" that runs from April 18th to April 22, meaning that all rides on the Vine bus system are free. We all notice that the buses coming up our way are often nearly empty, and I think it's the responsibility of all of us, when we can, to at least try the Vine, try it when it's free. I think it's good for all of us to do so. All right. That takes us to presentations and public recognitions, and we have three proclamations. I think what we do is turn this around a little bit, huh? So, the first proclamation is for Behringer, and at this point, I'd like Mr. Spooner, Ms. Donan, and Mr. Oldt Bivia to come up. And Ms. Sweeney, too. Very good. So, Behringer Celebratory Proclamation. Whereas seven score and zero years ago, the brothers Frederick and Jacob Behringer completed their first year of wine production at Behringer Vineyards. Whereas Frederick Behringer constructed the Rhine House, perhaps the single most amazing home in St. Helena, and indeed in Napa County, with its gorgeous and amusing stained glass windows rivaling the best in the world. Whereas since that time, Behringer Vineyards has been a singular presence in St. Helena, of which the city is exceptionally proud. Whereas Behringer Vineyards survived the prohibition years by selling Sacramento wines to the church, sales for which the city is eternally grateful as they ensured survival of this great winery. Whereas over a long period of time, Behringer has made wines of deservedly worldwide reputation. Whereas St. Helena residents are exceptionally proud to have a farming and wine-making facility of worldwide renown within their city limits. Whereas all residents are appreciative of the restoration of the Rhine House in 2007 and rightly consider Rhine House among the great historical treasures of Napa County and indeed of the state of California. Whereas residents of St. Helena enjoy their proximity to the Behringer property, encourage all visitors to visit the Behringer property, and especially the Rhine House. Now therefore I, Alan Galbraith, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim this April 24, 2016, as the first day of a year-long celebration of the 140th year of first wine production at the Behringer Vineyards. I encourage all residents and vineyards, visitors, to enjoy the seven-score celebration, and especially to take the time to enjoy the Rhine House and its gorgeous stained glass windows while sampling the great wines from this fabulous St. Helena venue dated March 22, 2016. So, very good. And if you would like to say a few words, you can.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm very honored and pleased to accept this on behalf of Behringer. I actually have only come across from Australia to America to take on the role of running Treasury Wine's American Wine Business two weeks ago. I'll be living in Napa. We've got a house that we will have in about three or four weeks' time. And I've been across here a number of times previously whilst I've been working for Treasury. And Behringer is certainly one of the great wineries, and it's one of the great wines that we have and that we treasure and that we look after. So, it's quite a privilege to accept this after, you know, 140 years. So, thank you very much.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Very good. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Sure.
And one thing I'd like to add, I'm Tracy Sweeney, General Manager here in St. Helena, and I do want to invite all of our citizens and our neighbors to come join us on April 24th, where we will officially kick off our year of celebration. Thank you, Mayor, for helping start that celebration tonight. But we'll be celebrating all day, April 24th, the last Sunday in April. Hope to see you there.
Very good. And I can attest that Behringer is worldwide because I made a quick trip to Switzerland, perhaps three weeks ago, stayed, went to a favorite hotel, asked what American wine they had, and the only one they had was Behringer. All right. The next proclamation is National Volunteer Week. Come on up. Hi, Mary.
Welcome.
Hi, nice to see you. So, National Volunteer Week, April 10 through 16, 2016. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world. Whereas volunteers can correct with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations like hands-on network action centers. And whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change discovering their power to make a difference. Whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. Whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. Whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's problems. Whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 63 million is a great treasure. Whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore I, Alan Galbraith, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim April 10 through 16, 2016, National Volunteer Week in the City of St. Helena, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference, dated March 22, 2016. And are you the recipient?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the community. My name is Mari Martinez, and I'm the Volunteer Coordinator at the St. Helena Public Library. And tonight, I would like to introduce you to Reina. Reina is the first time she comes to City Council. And I'm also representing all the volunteers, not only volunteers to city departments, but also volunteers for local groups and nonprofits. Believe me, I see them coming in and say, "How can I help?" They roll their sleeves and they're there for us, and that makes us a wonderful community. We're really lucky. So, thank you for this recognition.
Do you want to say something? I'm Reina Irwin, and I help at the St. Helena Library. Do you want to say what you do? I, like, I organize the movies and-- And the books? She's a big help. What grade are you in? I'm in sixth grade. Amazing. Starting for family groups. Thank you.
Keep up the work.
And our third proclamation, are you up again? National Library Week.
Stay here.
All right.
We like to come in normally, yes.
Whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and to continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, maker spaces, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles and providing more opportunities for community engagement and deliver new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries support democracy and affect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore I, Alan Galbraith, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 10 through 16, 2016. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. Because of you, libraries transform, dated March 22, 2016.
Yay!
Really quick.
Really quick. Thank you. On behalf of the library staff, the board members, and the friends and foundation, we want to thank the City Council and the entire community of St. Helena for this wonderful proclamation and for celebrating with us the power of libraries. We have a great responsibility of opening access, providing access to information and education to everybody that walks through that door. And it's with a lot of humbleness and happiness that we take that responsibility every day. So, thank you for joining us, and yeah, let's continue celebrating. Join us, just walk into the library, we'll be right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation. Household Hazardous Waste Program by Steve Letterer, Upper Valley Waste Management Agency Manager, Napa County Director of Public Works Manager, management, well, manager, too. So, here we are. Steve.
Or director. Either way, yes. Thank you, Mayor Galbraith. Seems to have gone down to library level. Yes. So, Steve Letterer, Napa County Public Works Director. I think I'm here today because of a conversation we had started with Steve Palmer, who's my counterpart, the city's Public Works Director, about a used oil collection tank that for a good 15 years or so, the county has actually paid for, but the city has run. It's kind of a joint partnership thing. And each time we got a new Public Works Director, I'd get a phone call saying, "Can't we get rid of this thing?" And when the tank first went in, actually, the concept even of collecting used oil was kind of a new concept. At that point, collecting used oil was kind of the hole in the backyard or whatever. So, and as laws changed, obviously, we didn't want to do that anymore. So, Steve asked that I come and talk to the Council and to the public about the various places where household hazardous waste, including used oils, actually can go. And so many things have changed over the last 15 years, there are so many more opportunities. So, I did hand out a one-page flyer, which all of you should have, and the clerk has, and I've got extra copies, actually, that I'll leave behind, and hopefully you can put up on your website as well. And we made this specific for St. Helena, actually. So, some of the places within St. Helena or easily close to St. Helena where household hazardous waste can be disposed of. First off at the Clover Flat landfill, if somebody wants to drive up there, they basically take all different household hazardous waste. So, everything from used oil to batteries, to normal recycles, of course, to paint, fluorescent tubes, needles, and electronic waste. At the Napa Valley Coffee Roasting Company, they accept rechargeable and non-rechargeable batteries. Steve's Hardware accepts both kinds of batteries, as well as fluorescent bulbs and tubes. Clinical Lay accepts all sorts of medications, and Sharps, although they don't accept controlled substances, which have got to be turned into law enforcement. The Paint Works accepts paint, and that's free. There's a program called Paint Care that came in a couple, three years ago that simply takes, if you've got, no matter how much paint you have, they'll take it, they recycle it, doesn't cost you a dime. And then Upper Valley Disposal Service down on Whitehall Lane, similar to Clover Flat, they take just about everything you can think of. Specific to motor oil, I'll mention also that Upper Valley Disposal has a curbside pickup. So, there's actually no need for anyone to drive oil to a particular tank. They can just call, set an appointment, and put it out at the curb, and it will disappear. A couple of events that are coming up, there is a paint recycling day, Saturday, May 21st, at Benjamin Moore Paints on Fulton Lane. So, same sort of concept, even though frankly, they'd take them any other day, but this is a day to encourage people to come and bring their extra paints and get them recycled and get them out of your garage. On Friday, April 8th, and Saturday, April 9th, there is a household hazardous waste event, which is going to be held at the Rutherford Grove Winery, which is the winery in front of the recycling facility, access off of Highway 29. And again, all the usual motor oils, antifreeze, they will take Sharps, pharmaceuticals, again, no controlled substances, batteries, fluorescents, solvents, all those usual things. So, Friday, the 8th, is actually a business day. If a business is interested, they can call, make an appointment, and they can bring their stuff there. And then Saturday, April 9th, is open to the public, no appointment needed. Again, interestingly enough, we do these events because it gives us a little bit of visibility and sort of encourages people to do this, but the reality is, all these things can still be delivered, usually for free, at a number of these other places, but the events kind of help encourage people. Let's see. I have a flyer which, again, I will give to the clerk, and I won't read, about 20 or different places where you can actually drop off used oil. This one's actually countywide, but a number of different car services. I'm looking for one that says, St. Helena specifically. Well, I'm not seeing it right now, but there are a number of different places where you can drop oil. And again, Upper Valley Disposal Service has a curbside program. So, I will leave all of those. I will also just mention, in our phone book and also online, is the Napa County Reuse Recycle Guide. It's a real good guide to countywide of all the different places where you can take recycling stuff, household hazardous waste, and we also have it in Spanish.
Oh, terrific.
So, and I was going to suggest creating something, say, maybe on Lyman Park, but no, maybe that's, maybe that would be a bad thought.
Tread lightly.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Council? All right.
Very useful information. Thank you for coming.
Thanks very much.
My pleasure.
All right. We'll go on to the consent calendar. Item 12, consideration and proposed approval of regular and special meeting minutes of, and I won't read all the dates, but they run from March 24, 2015 through May 26, 2015. Item 13, consideration of proposed approval of resolution amending the two-year memorandum of understanding between the St. Helena Employee Association and the City of St. Helena. Authorize the City Manager to execute the amended MOU and approve a revised mid-year budget adjustment not to exceed $30,100. Again, any member of the public or any member of the Council can remove an item from the consent calendar. Not seeing any such desire, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve? Second.
All, I guess, Ms. Black. Don't want to usurp your job here.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilmember Doring.
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Next item is item 14, informational item. General Obligation Bonds. Lead staff is Ms. Phillips. This came about because of a piece in the Star by a well-known resident, saying that this should be considered. And I ask that at least we understand what the background of this was.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At the last council meeting, I presented a very high-level overview of three different revenue options. Again, at the request of the mayor, or request of the entire city council, that was the parcel tax, the payroll tax, and the gross receipts tax. As the mayor mentioned, he asked me to add this item to the agenda. Again, a very high-level overview. There isn't time to do a detailed analysis. This is just testing the waters to see if the council had any interest. And then if you do, you could direct me to come back with more detailed information. But before putting a lot of time and effort into something, if the council has no interest in it, then that's just a waste of everyone's time. So, just to reiterate, just very high-level overview. Cities do have the authority to use general obligation bonds. And this is basically a property tax that's placed, that is above the Prop 13 amount, and it must be approved by a two-thirds majority of the electorate. It's commonly used by cities, counties, school districts for large projects such as building a library, doing major road projects and other types of things, jails. And so it is certainly a common revenue source. The reason I didn't include it with the Revenue Source Task Force items was I perceived indebtedness to be a mechanism for obtaining funds, not a revenue source. So one of the things with many of the revenues that we talked about, including a sales tax, real property transfer tax, even the hotel TOT, those revenues can be used to endet the city and to borrow. And so I didn't see a general obligation bond as a revenue source. I perceived it to be a way for the city to borrow. But that was the difference and why it wasn't discussed with the Revenue Source Task Force. It may not be used for equipment, maintenance, or operations. So general revenue bonds are very specific. In fact, the city used a general obligation bond to build the fire station. And I believe the last payment's coming up relatively soon. And so the community will then see that payment roll off of their tax bills. And so there's no savings. It's not that that's now paid off and there's additional revenue coming into the city coffers. That obligation is then finished. The citizens no longer pay for it, and it's no longer there on your tax bill. Just a couple of items. Again, it's a financing mechanism. Issuing debt is always an option for council. One of the things to consider when you're looking at debt, usually because you borrowed the money for such a long period of time, it's just like a house mortgage. You usually end up paying twice the price for a capital project because you have to pay back. And as I've talked about, as we've struggled with our financial situation, and I've talked about things like the unassigned and assigned general fund balance. These are things that are taken in consideration when you go to issue debt. The rating agencies come in and look at the current situation and the projections for the city. And if our financial situation is not strong, then we pay a higher interest rate. And so all of those factors come into play. So it's not as simple, first you have to pass it by a two-thirds vote, but then you also have to have the financial capacity to be sure that you're financially sound to be able to get a good interest rate and be able to repay this debt.
All right. Are there any initial questions of staff? Any comment at public hearing? Well, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion of this by council members?
So I understood it.
All right. All right, I don't think, my only comment would be that it requires a two-thirds vote. And then to stress your point, that it is like a household mortgage, as I understand it, and therefore you end up paying a lot over time. Okay, thanks very much for the informational item. Next item, 15. Voter Survey Results for City Charter and Vital Services Measure in St. Helena. Ms. Phillips.
We have a representative from FM3 with us this evening to make this presentation. And so, just to be clear for the council and the community, staff did not receive the data related to this survey. It's in possession and is under ownership of the Lou Edwards Group and FM3. And so we have represented here Lucia.
Correct, yeah.
I can't remember your last name.
It's not an easy one. Good evening, my name is Lucia Del Poopoo, and I'm part of the research team at FM3. And we conducted the survey, working closely with city manager Phillips and the Lou Edwards Group. And I believe there's a presentation that... I have a clicker, yeah. Great, thank you. And so, as you'll see, the main crux of this survey was focused on a city charter and vital city services measure. But we covered a lot of material and did a lot of community assessment as well in the course of the survey. So just setting the table and giving you some background on our project objectives. Our team has extensive experience with small towns and smaller cities, especially in Northern California. This is actually our third survey conducted in the city of St. Helena. And we developed these survey questions in close consultation with the city staff. So, our methodology, we conducted 156 interviews from January 26th to February 6th. And these were conducted online and via phone, on cell phones and landline phones. And our margin of sampling error is 7.9%. So plus or minus at the 95% confidence level. So, our key findings were basically, and it was funny to hear someone reference these earlier this evening, but voters in St. Helena are very, very concerned about roads, the cost of housing, and they have some concerns about government waste. The things that they were most satisfied with was their sense of police protection, sense of safety, library services, and the maintenance of parks. Clearly, people really love their parks in St. Helena. And everywhere. Approximately half, and I would say nearly half, supported a proposed charter measure. And we'll get into the details of how that support broke down. Six in 10 said they would support a vital city services measure. Although, two-thirds said that they did see a need for funding for city services. So that disparity might be caused by just a dislike of the mechanism, or for whatever reason. And as we'll also see, an RTT tax receives slightly more support than a sales tax. And so you'll see, that number comes in at 56%. So just over half support a sales tax. So, some of the background questions that we asked was, first of all, this question of how, what are the most serious problems in St. Helena? And here, we referenced past surveys and our experience in the area to give a short list of some of the issues that we know stand out. And then asked respondents to rate these on a scale of extremely serious, very serious, somewhat serious, and not a problem. And then we also allowed them to say they didn't know. And what came out far and above, here you see them ranked by extremely serious, is local roads, the cost of housing, wasted efficiency, and traffic congestion. Everything below that was below the 50% level. So we can kind of see that it's a little bit more mixed. But those four were the top items that people in St. Helena are concerned about. We then asked them to rate which city services were they most satisfied with. And as I mentioned earlier, police protection, library, and public parks came out really high. As you'll see, their total satisfaction there and the rate for all three of those items was over 70%. People are very happy with those. And at 61%, we see providing recreation opportunities and programs. So, those are the things that people in St. Helena are most pleased with. And we asked them how they perceive their city government. And we see that here voters were very divided. The city government overall receives a 44% approval rating, and the city council receives a 50% approval rating. When we asked them whether they believed that the city was in need of additional funding, two-thirds said that it did. It said at least some need of additional funding. And nearly a third said there was a great need. So now getting into the actual measures, and I apologize, this mic keeps dipping. I'm short, but I'm not that short. So this is the first measure. And these were presented in sequence. First, the city charter measure, and then the real property tax transfer. And we'll see that the charter city measure basically is required for the real property tax, transfer tax. And this language was developed in close consultation with the city. And this charter city measure receives lackluster support. It received 46%, so 4% under that 50% level threshold. Again, with the margin of error, it's over 50%. But what we really look at when we look at these numbers is the intensity of support. And we see that the definitely yes is actually smaller than the definitely no here. So that's an important consideration. Then, looking at the vital city services funding measure. So here, we proposed a real property transfer tax. And as with the charter city measure, it was developed with the city staff. And this received better support than the charter city measure. Again, hand-in-hand with the idea that your residents, your voters do feel that there is a need for funding. So the support here was a little bit better than the charter city measure. And we see that 59% said yes. But again, you have that intensity. Your intensity of definitely no is outweighing your definitely yes. Oops. Okay. And then we asked them, so imagine that you have both these questions in front of you, both these ballot measures. Would you vote on both? Would you vote on only one? How would you vote? And 40%, 39% said they would vote yes on both measures. And that's what really matters, right? Because without the charter city measure, you can't have the vital city services one. We then asked them, what if it was funded by a sales tax instead of a real property tax? And again, here we see that the support was not much stronger. It came in at 56%, so actually, three percentage points lower than the real property tax. So getting into some of these structural elements, we then asked, let's say the details of this measure have not been ironed out yet. Here are some different factors that could play out. Would any of these make you more or less likely to support this measure? And the only one that came in at over 50% more likely would be the idea that if it was a sales tax, it would have a sunset of nine years. Everything else, a rewording of the real property transfer tax, the 15-year sunset on a sales tax, and just a general description of a sales tax, did not really push voters to feel like they would be more supportive of a measure. And then we offered them the idea that this RTT tax rate would have a range. So higher property would have, oh sorry, higher properties would have a 1% tax, and lower value properties would have 1.5% tax. And it didn't really stick. We see that 39% said that they would support this. So this idea actually hurt the measure, which is important to know. We then asked them, if you had these funds, where would you like to, where would you direct them? And again, we developed this list in close consultation with the city, past experience, the idea of what are the projects that matter, that are relevant to your community. And far and above, we see that emergency response is very important in this community. Maintaining that, people feel safe and they want to keep it that way. They care about accountability, so ensuring that their funds are staying in St. Helena. And then also maintaining the city's long-term financial stability is up there. But in these top items, it would come as no surprise. It's public safety, accountability, and roads makes an appearance. So fixing streets and potholes. This was a very long list. And we see that some of these items actually came in a little bit lower. And the lowest ones were restoring library budget cuts, maintaining community parks, and providing youth recreation programs. And again, that doesn't mean that it's not important to people. It might just mean that they feel like this isn't, there isn't a need. When we asked voters about who they would most trust to have this information coming from, the absolute highest were local police officers, followed by the St. Helena Star, and then local business owners. As you see from there, it starts to get a little bit mixed and move down. But those three are the top most trusted messengers on these issues in your community. So, at this point, unfortunately, we do not recommend proceeding with the charter and RTT measures. We don't feel it would be cautious. You need voters to vote on both of those, and you're not within the margin of error on that measure. Voters do see a need for additional funding in your city, however. So it's just a sense of distrust and uncertainty that's driving this dissent against these measures. And so public education and continued engagement with members of your city, of your community, would actually be able to garner the support for this measure at a later date. Thank you, I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, please.
What was the average age of the survey respondents?
So I don't know the average age right off the top of my head. But what we do is, we pull a demographically representative sample. And all our data basically matches the demographics of your city, of your voters in your city.
Okay, because it seemed to me it may be skewed older since 35% had no opinion on what our after-school programs were.
And it could be, but voter populations tend to be older than the resident population. And so that might be why that's...
And what percentage owned their own home?
Again...
What's the question?
Oh, what percentage of the respondents owned their own home?
Right, I have a second question.
It looks like it's, excuse me, I'm going to do some mental math here. 55 plus 4, 59. Plus 10, 69 plus 72%.
Okay.
I could have just looked at what was ran, maybe done that.
And what was the ethnicity breakdown of the respondents?
Again, the ethnicity breakdown is done to reflect your voter population. We have 8% Latino, 83% white. And then we had 9% who did not tell us. And due to the small sample, sometimes those numbers are a little bit off. I think your Latino voters are a little bit higher than what we have here, captured here, but it's still...
And so, how did you randomly select them? Just curious, because I've heard some complaints that some people that lived in Calistoga were responding.
Right, and actually, I heard that too, and I'm happy you brought that up. So basically, the way that works is we have the voter registration file. And basically, we randomly select the sample from there. What happens is, sometimes people who register to vote move elsewhere, or because we have a small community and a smaller sample, we do an extra match where we then pull from publicly available sources these emails and this information to match it. This is all completely public information. It's not anything weird. But what ends up happening is, on occasion, a wrong email sneaks in. We don't keep that data, we don't use it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I follow along Sharon's question with respect to the percentage of homeowners? As I understand it, you said 72% were owners who responded in the poll?
Yeah.
And how does that compare with the actual numbers, the percentages of renters and owners in the city of St. Helena?
I can take a look. That's actually, so again, keeping in mind that these are voters, they're not all of your residents. I actually, the voter file for homeowners says 62%. So we're a little bit higher, actually, in our survey. But I think keeping in mind that because that is one of the data points on the voter file that's imperfect. Like voter registration, ethnicity, age, all of those are very accurate, or tend to be very accurate, because that's what you write down when you register to vote. But the homeowner one is a little bit, I think it's pulled a little bit differently, so we don't weight it. We don't touch it when we're looking at our data. We look at the other things. It is an important factor to consider, obviously, because a homeowner tends to be less likely to support a tax in general, a property tax.
Well, that's the reason I raise it. I mean, if we had a significant number of renters in town, and we could make the case that, you know, a transfer tax would not directly impact them, then that's something I would be curious about.
Unless all your renters are on the market for a home.
True. You know, so that's something of interest. If you just target one area of the city, we might be able to get all the votes, I don't know. Talk to me about this notion of emergency services and very satisfied with police. Is it a detriment to a certain degree? And it's kind of a weird way of saying it. But if people feel generally very safe and there's low crime, would they be less likely to support something, some tax measure that will help with emergency services? If you get my question.
Yeah, I understand what you mean. And I think that it's totally a case-by-case basis. I think that, in your community, there is regardless, a sense of need. So I think that, in messaging also, something we see is framing it as there's a potential loss of protection. Because people said that they felt like, and I think what you're getting at is, people felt like they were safe.
Right.
Thought it was important to invest in maintaining, but it's almost like, and they see a need for funding, but they won't support this measure. And it's almost like, yeah, I see a need for maintaining, but I don't see the urgency. And I think explaining, communicating that urgency to your community, it kind of builds the bridge between those items.
Or, or sort of just eliminating that issue, right? And just saying, well, that, that may not be considered a vital service, because most people think they're safe. I'm not suggesting, I'm just thinking out loud. And that we focus more on streets and roads. That is a, or wastewater treatment, or some, you know, and I know that's more on the capital side, a different, different fund. But, okay, I was just curious about that. What is, I mean, what, tell me what is a definition for you? Or what is a perceived definition of what vital city services are? When you came up with that phrase, maybe you did that with the staff, but I'm not exactly sure what that is. And I'm sure if you get ten people in a room, you'll get ten different answers. So I'm kind of, what was the thinking there?
Well, first, I'm going to go back to that ballot language, because that's what we, those were the vital city services that we deemed that, and with your staff, that people would respond to the best in this community, and also based on our experience. But in general, vital city service is exactly what have up there. Roads, parks, police, fire, and programs for youth and seniors. Like, those are what are the building blocks of a city, right? So that's what I would consider vital city services. And that's what we tried to capture in this measure language. And we tried to order them in order of things that we felt that people in your community respond to the best. So obviously, we put roads up there, because we know that that has been a contentious issue. And then also, emergency services, because that, that is the most vital city service of all.
Would it be, would it be fair to state that if you eliminate, eliminated some of those items, that you'd have a stronger response, or more favorable response?
It could be. And actually, that's exactly why we test those importance batteries. Because if this item were a little bit closer to that threshold, then we would consider swapping out some of the items in the ballot language and retesting it. Because that would, that's actually a very astute point. That's exactly what we do. But I think in this case, what's really affecting the support for, what's affecting the viability of the vital city services measure is not the measure itself, is the charter city measure.
Understood. Okay, that's enough for me from now.
Further initial questions?
I just had one question about why nine years as opposed to ten, or?
I believe that was developed with the staff and consultation.
Single digits versus double digits?
Yeah, I think you just try to pick some, you know, it's to catch the temperature. So at some point, fifteen was not of interest. Nine, I think we just picked a couple of dates that, that something, it hadn't, it was, it was a stab in the dark. It had no correlation to anything. Fixing anything, and the Payment Management Index, nothing like that. It was unsatistical.
Yeah. So can you just talk a little bit about the reaction when, when people were given that option?
Sure. And let's go to that slide, actually. So again, here we see that people, and I think, I always find this question interesting, because I think it needs to be taken with a little bit of a grain of salt. Because someone's like, oh, yeah, I'd be more likely to support it if it was a nine-year sunset. But until they read it in that ballot language, we don't really know what. This is kind of like a temperature check, to see if then, if it were viable and we could retest, should we include it? So I want to preface it with that. As you'll see, though, the likelihood of support for a sales tax with a nine-year sunset, although it's overall stronger, because you have more people saying they're somewhat more likely, looking at, once again, at that intensity, that much more likely is actually smaller than some of the other items. So, it's a factor that if the city somehow, in the future, after, you know, working through this public education and public engagement, decides to put a sales tax on the ballot, or begin to talk about it, or do polling, or research, or whatever, that would be an item to consider, is, okay, our voters do respond to this sunset.
And do you think, in your experience, that they respond to, better to a shorter sunset, like a five-year sunset?
It totally is community-dependent, situational, everything. I just was reviewing results for another client this morning, who their, their voters actually really supported something that could only be terminated by voters, no sunset. So it's completely situational. And, I mean, and that's why this is important, if, when the city does, if, if the city ever does decide to move forward with a revenue measure of this sort, to test these different factors.
All right. Any further initial questions? Okay, Ms. Del Poopaw?
Del Poopaw, yeah.
Got that right. You could sit down for a minute or two, and maybe we'll have you back.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to talk at public hearing?
I'll put up our contact information. Oops.
Mr. Sanchez. Daniel Sanchez. I wanted to urge the city council to particularly consider, given the results in slide seventeen, the sales tax, particularly, it seems like the one with the sunset might be a little bit more likely to get passed. If, it seems, and I've, of course, read through the long-term revenue source documents and the grim financial situation that the city is in. If, if we're, if the city is looking to a revenue source within, by, with, by November 2016, then that one seems like the most viable one, in particular, because something like a sales tax wouldn't have a organized constituency opposed to it, the way some of the other taxes. But, thank you very much.
And you're with the North Bay Real Estate Association?
North Bay Association of Realtors.
Oh, close, all right.
Close.
Okay, any other public comment? Ms. Heinz?
Ms. Heinz, I just also wanted to say that I also support the idea of the sales tax. And I just feel like it's, it doesn't apply to goods and services, I think, I mean, not goods and services. It doesn't apply to food and medications. And it's, I just think it's a good tax.
Okay. Any further public comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment. Any further council discussion? Are you looking for a direction from us? You are.
I am, because if you're interested in the real property transfer tax and the charter city, we're on a very tight timeline. And April, we need to move forward with the initial public hearings for the city charter portion of that formula.
And what would be the timeline if we decided on a sales tax?
I believe that would go in, we'd have to make a decision in July, August, for the November 2016 election. So we would have a little bit of time. Keep in mind that this polling was specific for the real property transfer tax, as directed by council at the goal-setting in 2015. It was actually at the request, and I certainly appreciate that, of the Revenue Source Task Force, to add the language about the sales tax. And so, we added that in at the last minute. And so, that's why the emphasis is on the city charter and the real property transfer tax. And so, if you were interested in a, in a sales tax initiative, I'm not sure we need to do another survey. But we certainly do need to look at our public education. And that was also recommended by the Revenue Source Task Force, and I strongly agree. There's monies included in the contract with Lew Edwards for consulting services for public education. And so, that's already in place, and so, we could move down that path. So either one, we're pretty much set to move forward. I'm just looking for council direction.
And what did the county decide in terms of the sale, the additional sales tax that they're going to put on the ballot?
I recall being a quarter.
Oh, it's on the June ballot?
And a quarter. Quarter cent sales tax.
That's for the jail.
That's right.
For the jail.
Park, right?
Well, jail and children's programs, but really for the jail.
And there's other initiatives that we've heard will be on the November 2016 ballot. Things like, from the open space, and potentially some others, so.
And so, would we be?
They're looking at an eighth, an eighth of a percent.
Would we be able to decide on this after we found out the results of the county's sales tax increase?
I believe so, yes. But you'd have to be careful with the timing on public education. I think you'd lose the window of really doing a comprehensive public education program if you wait until, it would be the first week of June. We'd, we'd need to, if you have an interest, we would really need to spend the money, gear up, and get ready. And so, I'm not sure you're really saving anything, because if you wanted, then if I came back to you in June, it would have to be then the second week of June, I would get direction, you do public education, you've lost some, some really critical public education time and communication with the community.
Well, refresh my recollection with respect to the amount of money that we would, you know, that's estimated we would receive from a sales tax at a half percent?
One percent, we receive two-point-eight million, and a half percent then would be one-point-four million.
Oh, that's right, okay.
And again, that, that entire amount would come directly to the city of St. Helena. So there's an eight percent sales tax in Napa County. The city receives one percent of that eight percent. And so, anything that's passed specifically by the voters of St. Helena would stay in St. Helena, and could only be used by the city of St. Helena.
Any further council comment before I link mine?
Well, are we going to give direction?
Well, let me, let me say what I.
Well, yeah.
Go ahead, please.
I would just like to say that, that I'm in favor of going for the sales tax and taking a look at that, and possibly with a sunset revision on it, so.
You know, I really am impressed with the quality of this study. And depressed by it in some ways, too.
Yeah.
The reality is that we, the reality is that we need both taxes. But realistically, we can only shoot for one. And I do think the objective evidence suggests that we should go for the sales tax with the sunset provision. And even if it fails, which I hope it doesn't, it will be a measure for the next time. Because sooner or later, we are going to get there. It's just obvious we will. And, or we're going to sacrifice critical services in our community, which none of us want to do, it's against our values. And, and so, I would suggest that, that you receive the direction, which I sense that you proceed down the sales tax route with a sunset provision. Nine years seems not unreasonable to me. And, and then, I think you should call upon us, especially me, to help out any way I can with the public education program. As everybody knows, unfortunately, I suffer from the family disease. I like to write. Is that enough direction for you for this evening?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Very good.
I just want to go on record as not, not being in favor of a sales tax.
Okay.
I did some informal, informal polling of my own about taxes, and the opposition tended to go into two camps, men and women.
One thing that I think would be useful, if it's not hard to dig out, would be to, and maybe it's in the code somewhere, would be to show exactly what is not subject to the tax. In other words, we know food is not, but I'm sure there's a long list of things that is not subject to the tax. And that sort of baseline information, if it were to come out fairly soon, would be helpful to me in terms of talking about it.
Absolutely.
Is that something we can decide? I mean, there's this big movement now that women's health care products not be subject to taxation as they are. Is that something we can carve out?
I don't believe so. I believe we have to follow state law. I don't think it has to do with our code. I believe it's state law.
And so, and so, here's how I feel. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of taxes. But I think, but I, but I realize the critical nature of our need. So I guess, I feel more comfortable with a five-year sunset. Maybe that's too short of time, but I'm just hopeful that in five years, we're going to have two hotels online. And maybe that's unrealistic, because, believe me, we entitled a hotel more than five years ago, and it's at square one. So, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to go along with the group on this, but I'm not.
You know, the council hasn't discussed a sales tax publicly. And so, the direction could be to bring a sales tax forward, and staff could prepare a staff report that, that talks about the timelines, talks about the education, talks about what this means, and sort of sets up the entire sales tax process and everything related to it. So if you'd like, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for me to move me along. I'm concerned about all the other taxes that the county is wanting to initiate. And, you know, we have a, I guess, another tax coming up for transportation, that's a sales tax.
Well, it's going to be the same as measure, it's rolling into a different.
Yeah, okay. And then there's jail, open space, it's not an increase, you're correct. So the cumulative impact for me is kind of of concern. So I want to be able to kind of gauge what, how successful the county is in June. That would, that would be important to me. And then, of course, I'm concerned about the regressivity of it. Even though I recognize that things like food and medicine are not part of it, that, that's important. But it would be helpful to have a report to kind of move through those issues.
Certainly, it won't be, it won't be the first meeting in April, it'll probably be the second.
Yeah, my, my only further comment would be on regressivity, is that we always need to keep in mind that while a sales tax is regressive, not raising the revenue and cutting discretionary services such as recreation and library is even more regressive. So it's, it's kind of a balance there. Okay, that, so you're satisfied with the direction at this point?
Yes.
Good. Now, oh my goodness, this next one, yes. Let's see, oh, no, the next one is not difficult. Okay, so following one. Receive and file administrative policy PFL-007 grant application and management policy. Consideration, propose approval, resolution rescinding any previous policies or administration memorandum which are inconsistent with administrative policy. P-FL-007 grant application management policy. Lead staff is, Ms. Mitz or Ms. Prokofsky? Oh, she's over there, very good.
Good evening, there, council. I'm flinging this microphone, it's going to.
Wait, just a minute, yeah, wait till.
Fifty minutes.
I'm just glad I have the easy one tonight.
Yeah, bring our spirits back up.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. I hope that I can bring your spirits up after the last item. But just remember that I am talking about the development and implementation of policy. So I'm here tonight to give you an overview of the new grant application and management policy. A full copy is attached to your staff report to receive and file. And I'm here tonight to ask you to consider and approve a resolution to rescind any policies and/or administrative memorandum which are inconsistent with the new policy. I'd like to highlight just a couple of things before I get into just a broad overview of the new policy, is that staff did research to see if there was any pre-existing grant application or management policy, and found none. But in the spirit of good public administration, that's why I'm here tonight with the resolution, just in case something is out there and does exist. So, the twenty-thousand-foot view for you of this new administrative policy, and its goal was to create checks and balances. And that's something that didn't exist in previous administrations when it came to grants application. So staff will be primarily focused on grants for capital improvements, and will consider other grants for operating costs, pilot programs, or similar programs, but only after careful analysis of long-term budget impacts. All grant applications must be consistent with one of the following. Approved council-directed goals, the five-year capital improvement plan, or a similar plan such as a bicycle or pedestrian plan, a federal or state mandate, an item listed in a, in a budget or approved similar document. This is to ensure that grant-funded programs do not create new programs that are in conflict with established priorities, or create an unanticipated operating expense. Grant applications will only require your approval, that of the city council, when the funder requests it, when it adds regular new staffing, or creates a new ongoing operational expense after the grant is complete, if matching funds are required from either the assigned or the unassigned general fund reserve, or if there's an ongoing commitment to continue the program after the grant is complete, or if there's a special request, if the purpose of the grant is outside of any of those previously stated policies or adopted plans. You, the city council, will approve all grant and loan agreements, all JPA agreements, joint powers agreements, memorandums of understandings, or similar documents. This is to make sure that you and the community know what monies are coming in from outside sources. The city manager will be the authorized representative, unless the funder requires a different position. That's rare, but sometimes that it happens. Likewise, all council-issued letters of support will be approved by you as a body. And if an outside agency comes in and says, city of St. Helena, we'd like you to support our grant, that letter too will be approved by the entire city council. Particularly so when a cash or in-kind match, an in-kind match being staff support, supply, something that's non-directly monetary, as in a check, that must be explicitly stated in the letter. In the past, sometimes, we've had some issues where there's been some confusion, and outside agencies have thought we've been making contributions. So we think that it's important that any of those contributions be specifically listed in a letter of support. in a letter of support. For grants management, my position, the grants manager will have primary responsibility for those tasks. Those are periodic reports, changes in scopes, requests for reimbursements, closeouts, audits, but I will be supported by the fantastic staff in our operating departments. Again, to make sure that that checks and balances is there, when the grants manager does the work, the department head, the finance director, the city manager will approve that work. If operating staff does those same tasks, I'll be making those approvals. The grants manager will continue to give you quarterly updates, letting you know new applications, awards, status, closeout, and results. And the finance department will keep the master file for all grants. So, again, this is a high-level discussion, a high-level review of the new administrative policy. I ask that you receive and file this policy and that you approve the attached resolution to rescind any previous policies that may exist. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have any questions?
Just, what are the best practices in community or small cities like ours with respect to preapproval of applications by city councils?
They are similar to what I laid out, which is when grant applications are inconsistent, again, with those previously adopted plans or policies, then they should come before city council. In most cases, all grants are not preapproved by city council, mostly due to timing. It's not uncommon for grant applications to have three to four weeks, and that's not enough time for staff to put together a quality application, prepare the staff report, get it done in time for proper agendizing by the city clerk, and to you before that grant is due. And so, that's why they should follow those preadopted council-approved goals, policies, plans, et cetera.
Would you bring it to us if there was not a relevant policy or goal that governed the application?
Yes, yes. Yes, that's written out in the policy.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
Nope.
Mr. White?
No.
I have done any... Let me open the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. And any further counsel discussion? Then I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the policy and to approve the resolution as prepared by staff.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Crowell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you for putting that together. Very helpful.
Okay, this takes us to number 17. Request for direction on repayment strategy for state revolving loan fund. Ms. Smiths? And let me make a prefatory comment here so that it's very clear, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but this has absolutely nothing to do with the $1.9 million that was previously repaid to FEMA. It went back to a federal agency through the state agency, but basically, it was a federal payment that was done by the prior administration. And the issue that we're dealing with tonight is a subsequent issue having nothing to do with that. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right. So, that's out of the way. Let me let you proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. So, tonight, we are looking -- we're requesting direction on a repayment strategy for the state revolving loan fund, and I'll just refer to that as SRF. A little bit of background on this, on January 26 of this year, staff presented a report on the comprehensive flood project. Part of that report discussed approximately $2.1 million of expenses that appeared to be charged to both the state revolving fund as well as the Department of Water Resources grant. So, the SRF is a loan, DWR was a grant. Staff has, since that time, reached out to both SRF and DWR to explain the situation and work with them, and I do wanna say thank you to Tracy, who's been working with them as well as both SRF and DWR. They've been very receptive to us, which has been helpful in this process. The city currently is working to close out the DWR grant and retain the remaining grant funding. We do have some funds that will be released, and it's contingent on conservation easements, so we are working with them right now. And then, SRF recently did request that the city propose a payback schedule for the $2.1 million that was also received from DWR. So, the funding, basically, there was receipts that were submitted to both organizations for duplicate expenses, so we received money from both of them. The payments that SRF is requesting, the payment schedule, it's not a substitution for our regular annual payment, which is $526,805,000. This is a repayment for duplicate monies received. So, every year, in addition to the regular $526 payment, we also -- they're proposing an additional repayment schedule. The repayment must come from the general fund. It cannot come from any other funding sources. So, what staff is doing tonight is we're presenting three payback scenarios. Obviously, there are multiple scenarios that we could have presented, so we just tried to come up with some basic scenarios so you can consider them, provide us direction on which payback strategy, and we're using the scenario so you can determine the strategy. The scenarios are based off of the financials that were presented in the long-range financial forecast. We felt using the long-range financial forecast will give the council the opportunity to see how each scenario will affect the city's finances in a format that you have been seeing. The scenarios, there is a component of it. They're also based on the Measure A drawdown monies. While we can't use Measure A drawdown monies to pay back the loan, the first -- in the scenarios, you see the first three years, we are anticipating Measure A drawdowns to be able to completely draw down the Measure A fund by the time it sunsets and before Measure T comes online. So, that is a factor. There are definitely moving parts in the scenarios, and so, as different things change, you know, once council goes this direction, we will keep you updated on every single change. The long-range financial forecast, there are two presented for each scenario. So, the first is a baseline. So, this is a modest economic recovery for all 10 years, and the second is a baseline with a minor recession. So, this, it's the same format as a baseline, but with a minor recession in fiscal years 2018 through 2020. Another component of this is the DWR grant closeout. We are anticipating $210,000 from this closeout. Once it's closed, this can be applied directly to the state revolving fund loan principal, so can't go towards interest or not interest, sorry. What are they called? Administrative fees. Thank you. It can only go directly towards principal. Something to take into consideration, if for some reason, we cannot receive that additional $210,000, that is gonna have to come from the general fund reserve. So, that's one of those moving parts in this factor. Measure A can be used to make the annual payment of $526,000, but it cannot be used as repayment for duplicate monies that are received that we're paying back. The Measure A drawdown, where we are right now, staff is confident in the drawdowns amounts for fiscal year -- I'll just use the last year of it, fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19. Right now, we are cautiously optimistic to be able to do the 1617 drawdown in time for the regular SRF payment, which is each November. There are certain factors that staff does need to work on with the Measure A funding. Tracy has been working with the county auditor controller. Part of it is that they do have to audit all of our records for the past, is it 18 years, Tracy?
About 10.
So, sorry, about 10 years. My mistake on that. About 10 years, they have not had an opportunity to audit any of our paperwork, so Tracy's been working with the county auditor controller. So, that audit does need to take place. And in addition to that, we would have to do the contract amendments with Measure A in order for us to be able to do the drawdown. So, at this point, we are cautiously optimistic. If for some reason, we cannot get all the paperwork done by then, the additional $526 will also have to come from the general fund reserves. And I just wanted to make you aware of that in the scenarios. So, the first scenario we're presenting tonight is a gradual repayment. So, this, we're looking at doing smaller gradual payments in the first three years, and then, this is going to defer the larger payments to the last three years, so fiscal year 20, 21, and 22, with a final payment in fiscal year 23. It's kind of small, but I wanted to at least let you know this scenario is in your packet. The items that we're looking at is under the blue highlighted in the middle, so that's the payback of the $1.89 million in principal. So, under this gradual repayment scenario, you'll see the first year, we're proposing $75,000. The second year is $100,000. The third year is $150,000. And then, the years after that, we would have to resume basically the regular $526,000 required payment each year. The reason why we don't have to keep the $526 for the first year would be that the Measure A funding could actually cover that $526,000. So, you'll see under the Measure A amount, those are the amounts that we're projecting to receive from Measure A. A little further to the right, you have your DWR retention payment. So, that is the additional $210,000 that we are anticipating that we'll get from the grant closeout. Again, if anything happens with that, that is going to have to come from the general fund. So, the general fund impact, the immediate impact for scenario one, is that we will have a reduction of expenses for the first three years. So, you can see the amounts on the screen. It's $451,000 for the first year, approximately $426 the second year, and $376,000 for the third year. That is a reduction in expenses based on the long-range financial forecast, because the long-range financial forecast that Jennifer has been presenting has included a payment of the $526,805 payment to Measure A. So, this is based off of the long-range financial forecast, so I don't want to have any misperceptions that we're saving this money by it. It's a reduction based on what was put in the previous long-range financial forecast. The long-term impacts of the general fund, is it starting in fiscal year 20, 21, and 22? The expenses will increase up to $526,000. The current long-range financial forecast accounts for regular payments of SRF through 2021. If something like scenario one is a strategy the council wants to look at, it will actually increase the spending from the general fund for SRF payments for an additional two years. So, just wanted to make you aware of that. So, what the long-range financial forecast did have in it, it's gonna extend it out two more years. There is early payback savings from service charges, in part due because of the measuring money that can be used to pay off the SRF, in addition to paying it off early with the repayment schedule. So, it's estimated about $628,000 in early payback savings from service charges. This is the first scenario for the baseline revenue forecast. So, what this shows you is your net operating revenue. So, this is your revenues over expenses. So, our expenses come in, our revenues come in. Where it's red, it means our revenues did not cover the expenses, and so, that's when we have to go to the general fund reserves. Where it's blue, it means our revenues did cover the expenses, and that is the extra that gets put into the unassigned general fund reserve. So, as you can see under this scenario, starting in 17, 18, and 19, you'll see it adds a little bit in there from the original scenario. And then, you can see in 2021 and 22, that's when the additional $526 gets taken into consideration. The next scenario, this is a baseline with a minor recession. So, again, you can see the difference, and I did create one more chart so you can see them side by side. I thought that might be a little bit easier in the PowerPoint. So, the numbers on the left are the -- is the regular, just the regular baseline, and the numbers on the right are with the recession. And so, you can see, especially during the recession years, you can see where it's up to, you know, a little over half a million dollars, and it's bringing it down to 200,000. So, it does make it pretty tight. The second scenario that we are -- second and third scenarios are pretty much the same, just with different dollar amounts. This is a flat repayment scenario. So, this is flat repayment of $500,000 in the first three fiscal years. Under this scenario, it is estimated that SRF will be paid off in 2019 with a final payment of approximately $400,000. So, it is going -- under this scenario, it is paid off early. So, here, again, you'll see the chart where it's a flat payment of three $500,000 payments, and then, the last payment of $390,000 -- well, it's -- sorry, it's just about $400,000. Again, you see the Measure A repayments as well as the DWR retention payment. The immediate savings to general fund or the immediate impact to general fund is the first three years, there is a reduction of expenses of just about $27,000. That does tie back into the regular general or the regular payment that was going to be made to SRF of $526,805. So, that's where you see the reduction based off of the long-range financial forecast. In fiscal year 1920, the final payment is approximately $400,000. So, in 1920, you'll see approximately $100,000 reduction of expenses, just because you were paying $500,000 before that, and all of a sudden, you only have to pay 400. The long-term, the current long-range financial forecast accounts for the regular payments to SRF through 2021. In this scenario, the SRF is paid off in 1920, so it's paid off a year early. So, this will decrease and it will decrease the anticipated expenses in 2021 by $526,000. The early payback savings from service charges under this scenario is just about $727,000. Here's, again, the baseline revenue forecast under scenario two. You'll see in fiscal year 1617, it would bring it into -- it would be taking some money from the general fund reserves because it's a larger payment. And you'll see in 18 and 19, it is a larger payment, that all of a sudden, you'll see the trend going up for a general fund unassigned reserves starting in 2021, so a lot earlier than originally anticipated. This is with the baseline with a minor recession. And again, I'll put them side by side so you can see the difference in this early payback option of the $500,000 flat rate. The third scenario, again, is a flat repayment. So, this is doing a smaller flat repayment of $125,000 in the first three fiscal years, so it takes it from 500 to 125. It's deferring larger payments to fiscal years 2021 and 22 with a final payment in 2223. So, again, you'll see the breakdown of the 125 flat rate, and then, it increases to the regular $526 payment. The immediate impact to general fund, for the first three years, it would be a reduction of expenses of about $402,000. And again, this is based off of what was put in the long-range financial forecast for payment. The long-term is in fiscal years 2021 and 22, the expenses will increase to that normal payment of $526,000. The current long-range financial forecast accounts for the regular payment of SRF going through 2021. Scenario three, much like scenario one, does increase general fund payments for the SRF an additional two years. Under this scenario, an early payback savings from service charges is estimated to be about So, scenario three, this, again, is the base revenue forecast for the long-range financial forecast. Here is with a minor recession, and then, just comparatively, what it would look like with those two, with those scenarios and a baseline plus a recession. Considerations for all scenarios, this is a little bit of a repeat of earlier, just a reminder that the long-range financial forecast does take into account the $526,805 from the general fund through 2021. Scenarios one and three will increase this through 2223. One of council's goals was to look at new revenue sources. While we are looking at them, there's no guarantee the revenues will be realized, so that's just something to take into consideration. This potentially could be a factor in scenarios with larger payments in future years if the new revenue sources aren't realized. Measure A drawdown, again, staff is confident in the drawdowns for 17, 18, and 1819, and we're cautiously optimistic for 1617, just based on the timing of getting our audit as well as getting an amendment to the contract. Again, each scenario anticipates the $210,000 to be received from DWR to be put directly to SRF principal. If that kind of -- if that isn't available to happen, it means the $210,000 will have to come right from the general fund reserves. The next steps is, based on the council direction, the staff will propose a repayment schedule to SRF. Once the repayment schedule is agreed upon, it will be presented to city council. Fiscal impact, the fiscal impact is dependent on two things. The first is the strategy the city council directs staff to propose to SRF and SRF agreeing to the proposed payback schedule. The second is a timeline for full SRF repayment is contingent on the actual Measure A revenues received, as the estimates are frequently updated by the county at Mappa. And this is one of those moving parts that with whatever strategy is decided, we will come back to council as soon as we get new revenue estimates from the county. Recommended action from the staff tonight is to provide us direction on your preferred repayment strategy to pursue with SRF. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any initial questions? Let me open it up for public comment, and I don't... Ms. Minette, you've got all this math in your head?
No. No, I'm rather bewildered, but I think I've put one question together. If the unsure drawdown from Measure A for 1617 does not happen because the auditing and the paperwork isn't done, is that gone forever, or can it be drawn upon once that auditing is done?
All right. Ms. Smiths, can you respond to that?
It has not gone forever. We are able to draw it down once we get all of our paperwork in order, so we will eventually be able to draw down those funds.
Thank you.
And does that mean you would be able to draw it down and then reimburse the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further public comment? I'll close the public comment, and who's brave enough to lead off here?
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, well, by all means.
Just understanding the charts, I'm really struggling with when you say the drawdown, and then, when you... I'm really struggling with, when you say the, the drawdown, and then when you, when you talk about in these charts, the measure A amount that's listed there. For example, attachment A, the scenario one, you have in there measure A amount, and then for sixteen seventeen, it's one thou, one million three hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. I, I'm not sure I get what that, what that means in, in comparison with the five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars payment.
The measure A drawdowns, those are for expenses that we've already paid towards the flood project, that are measure A eligible for reimbursement. So that's the drawdown money that's available to us to, to be able to do a drawdown from measure A. So the, the measure A column and drawdown, that's one and the same. When we do the measure A drawdown, we are able to use the drawdown monies for, to repay the, the SRF loan. So the remain, and when they did the SRF loan, they did use measure A monies as, as a guarantee for, for payment. So as soon as we draw down those measure A monies, they immediately have to go back towards the SRF loan. And so you'll see that that actually does decrease the principal substantially in the first three years.
I saw that. So, so that one million three hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars, the estimate, is all available to pay, to pay?
Directly towards the SRF.
The SRF?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess, I guess fundamentally, so, so we took out a loan from the, the state revolving fund. We, we knew what the total amount of the loan was, correct? And we knew we had to pay it back, we had to pay it all back, right, with some interest, correct? So, so this is not, but, but the, maybe the, and so, the problem we're facing is it, is it because we anticipated that we would be able to pay it back with measure A funds instead of the general fund? Is that the issue? Because we knew we had to pay it back, right? We, we got a loan, we got to pay it back. So I'm not, I'm trying to figure out what's the difference between the regular payment we, we would be making, and this additional monies we're talking about here?
The additional monies that we do have to repay to SRF, they are because we, we basically had the same invoices. We, we took that invoice, we billed DWR, then we took the same invoice, and we billed SRF. So basically, we got money twice for the same thing. And so what we should have done is just done, just billed, submitted the expenses to the grant, and not actually taken the, the balance off of the SRF loan.
But irrespective that we had duplicate charges, we still would have had to pay that loan back, correct?
Right, but the issue is, we borrowed eight point one million dollars. We were really only eligible for six, well, five point nine. And so FRS, SRF is saying, you really weren't entitled to those funds. And rather than, than paying it off on your normal payback schedule of five twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight, we're saying, mm, yeah, you really need to pay that back now.
It wasn't a limitation on the contract, so okay, we're just going to continue to dole out money to the city of St. Helena?
No.
I don't understand that.
We forgot that clause. So that's the issue, is, is that because we, we
That's helpful for me.
And I use this, I use this term very carefully. We inappropriately took that money. We weren't eligible for it, because it was covered through the Department of Water Resources grant. And so we should have looked at our invoices and said, because remember, they were both drawdowns. SRF is very unusual. When you hear a loan, you hear, oh, we borrowed the money, and it was sitting here, and we could use it as we choose. It was a drawdown. And we should have, at that point, looked at the invoices and said, oh, we drew it down over here, we're not eligible for that. And the ultimate cost of the construction of the project was lower than expected, and we didn't need that initial, that, that additional two million dollars. And that decision wasn't made in the process. We went ahead and drew the two million down twice. And so SRF is now saying, you need to repay that. What we're asking of council is, our negotiating strategy, do you want us to try to just pay it off and, and be done with it? Do you want us to try to have some fewer payments in the beginning, and have that obligation later? And that's the direction we're looking for. We didn't feel comfortable putting a position forward, because ultimately, the contract amendment will come to council. And so we wanted to be sure you were part of the initial conversation to say, we would rather pay it upfront, get it done with. Because remember, part of what we're trying to do is preserve our reputation as a grantee. So the good part of this scenario is, we're preserving the Department of Water Resources grant, because we have grant applications with them right now for Upper York Creek. We'd very much like to receive those, and so we want to show the Department of Water Resources, we are a competent grantee. So we've carved that off and said, this is good, we're heading down this path, that these, these funds were appropriately drawn down, and, and we're going to finish out that grant. With SRF, we're also trying to say, yes, we found, we found this mistake. We self-audited, we found it, we'd like to now correct it, so that we then can be a good grantee. So that's part of that strategy, is getting this behind us, so we can move forward.
Okay, and then it, in some prior time, with some prior administration, we, we knew how much we, did we know how much we took, and then we basically, okay, this is what we have to pay back? Was the five hundred twenty-six thousand dollars based on a, an incorrect number?
No, it was, so it was based on the, the eight point one million dollar loan.
Okay.
And there's administrative, it's just like, again, we're back to the mortgage.
Got it.
And so it adds up to being a total of, we owe in the end, I don't recall.
All right.
So in twenty twenty-eight, because you've paid all these administrative fees every year for the privilege of borrowing this money, you've almost doubled the cost of your project, and we talked about that in the general obligation bonds. And so we, we thought, because we thought construction costs were going to come in higher than they did at the time. And so we thought we needed all these different revenue sources to cover the construction of the flood control projects.
Got it.
And they turned out, the bids turned out lower, and then, again, it goes back to the co-mingling. We talked to the council about the fact that these, all these funds should have been in different funds, and, and some of this potentially could have been avoided, which is exactly what we're setting up now. Everything went into the flood control fund, and became, our perception is, it became a place to pay for everything flood control related. And so we got caught up with the double invoicing.
Is the, sort of the central policy question that you're looking for us to weigh in on, the, 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 the potential to save money if we pay back earlier versus the draw on the reserve, and, and potentially impacting our, our, our twenty-five percent reserve goal? Are those the two sort of issues that we're comparing and trying to balance?
Yes, and so just a point of clarification, Director Mitz mentioned that it was the unassigned general fund reserve. Most of the scenario for the first several years doesn't even achieve your twenty-five percent goal yet. So you're looking at assigned general fund reserve money. So you're, when we talk about the city's financial state, we talk about being rated by the rating agencies, these are all the things that are taken into consideration. So yes, we'd like your thoughts about what would be appropriate from the, having to use general fund monies. Are you, are you more interested in trying to shore up our financial situation now? Because we know sixteen seventeen is going to be tight. We know that. We know that from the forecast, we know that from the increased expenses that are coming in, and revenues are slowly going up, and, and the cost of expenses, our expenses are going up faster than our revenues are increasing. And so we know sixteen seventeen will be diff, difficult. As Director, as Director Mitch mentioned in her presentation, your revenue enhancements options are, are options that we're working towards. And so we don't know what will come to fruition in November, and, and future hotels, and future revenue sources. So where do you want to bet? Do you want to own up, basically, and say, yep, we took these monies inappropriately, and we have an obligation to pay them back, and we should cut some services and have a tighter budget in these first couple of years, because we were never eligible to have these monies? Or do you want to hedge your position a little bit, and say, let, let's see, let's see if some of these revenue sources can come to fruition, and let's pay a little bit less upfront, and, and hedge that in the future, we're going to have more revenue? The first is safer. It's harder on the community, it's harder on the council. It's, it's more fiscally responsible, it's probably more fiscally prudent. The second is a little bit more of a gamble, and, and that's really what we're looking for from you, is, is what direction we should head.
And those decisions would occur during the budget process?
Those decisions
If we decided to take this first scenario?
No, we need
Or the, the one where we
The decisions of what we're going to be, where we're going to source the money would, or cut would come in.
No, if we decided to, to shore things up, and make those payments, and pay them off as quickly as possible, that decision would not be made tonight. Obviously, we'd have to figure out what it is we need to weigh in terms of the community's values, what, what's more important, right?
Right, so that would come as part of the workshop, exactly. We, what we would present to you is, there's an additional five hundred thousand dollar expenditure, which means your revenues are coming up even shorter, and we're going to have to find places, we're going to have to nip and tuck a little bit more, and you're not going to reach that twenty-five percent goal that we have for your general fund. Is that okay? And so this is the opportunity for you to have that discussion and give us this direction.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful for me, thank you.
Can I ask just one mechanical question, to see if I understand this appropriately? Looking at your attachment A, where it says, beginning balance fiscal year sixteen seventeen, that's the beginning balance of the amount we owe the state revolving fund, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And even under the best of circumstances, with measure A, remaining measure A funds, we would never have enough measure A to pay off the total five million eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. We're about a million eight short.
That is correct.
So sooner or later, we were going to, we were in a position in any way, where we were going to hit the, the, the general fund for a million eight, or two million dollars, or whatever the number is in that area.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and basically, if we pay it off, if, if, if we pay off sooner rather than later, then in other words, we pay off this one point eight million, or one point eight nine million sooner rather than later, an effect of that is that the state revolving fund loan will not go all the way out to twenty twenty-eight, which is what we previously assumed.
That is correct.
Okay, so, in effect, maybe I can't articulate this, but the way I kind of see it is that we were already thinking in terms of hitting the general fund later on, after the measure A funds ran out. And to the extent that we pay more now, yes, you're right, we're reducing our, we're reducing the gamble that we already previously said to ourselves we were taking. All that, which
Yeah, I, I, I'm with you, Alan.
Okay, and so, to me, to me, I would go, I, I think we need to preserve our cash flow position. We need to do what we can to preserve our reserves. And to me, I would, subject to being talked out of it by my colleagues, I would, I would go for as close to attachment A as you can, such that the payback out of the general fund is postponed. And that, and then, and then hopefully, we can drive home to the community that there will be a real slash in services, if we don't deal with this problem in the next couple of years. But that's not to say that we have sufficient revenues now to avoid pitfalls that could come across in any event. But to my way of thinking, we need to preserve our cash position in case of some, to the extent that we can, in terms of the twenty-five percent reserve. That's where my head is.
I, I'm agreeing with Alan, unless there's some reason in terms of our reputation in getting grants in the future, that that would be seriously impact, that that would seriously impact our rating, or whatever.
I think there's, there's two factors that come into play. One, will SRF agree to it? So, so we wanted to alert you to the fact that potentially, they may say, nope, we want it all back in four years. And so this strategy may not work. So this would be, you know, option one would be your top choice, and we could go back to SRF and say, you know, the council's given us direction, they'd really like to see us pay it off in later years rather than earlier years. And my perception would be, and I'll look for a nod from Tracy, that once we have the, the amendment to the loan agreement in place, I think we're in much better standing. It's this nebulous position that we're sitting in right now. Once it's in place, we're back to a good grantee. We, we've got everything, we recognized it, we resolved it, we're good, we've got a payment plan, and, and I think we're in much better standing again.
Okay, so then, I guess I would agree with Alan. It just seems a little bit risky to put ourselves more at risk.
I would agree. I mean, at least this should be our first position, and see, see how it floats with them.
Paul, are you more conservative?
I am. So we're, we're basically assuming that we're going to be a little healthier down the road sometime. Is, is that it? Talk me through it.
Yes, that's, that's the theory, at least.
If we're not, we're really in trouble.
Is that what you're thinking, Alan?
Well, but you have to keep in mind that we already accepted this risk previously. So we're not putting ourselves at greater risk, as I see it, than we were before by going down this road. Because measure A, under no circumstances is going to bring enough money to pay off this loan.
Right, so that's an excellent rationalization for going with number one. I'm with you, but it's, it's, it's
I'm not sure that was the thinking at the time. I mean, we're, we're, in hindsight, we're thinking, we're speculating that that was the thinking of the council.
Well, I'm not
I think people were probably thinking we'd get it all paid back by measure A, right?
Well, I'm not speculating about the thinking at the time, to tell you the truth. I'm looking at where we are today.
There was a lot of thinking at the time, that, that we were going to get that Worden money, and from the feds.
The FEMA, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you are specu, yeah, you are speculating to the, to the degree that you say, well, we already were willing to take that risk way back when, that we're going to, that we were not going to have to use, or we were going to have to use the general fund.
Well, it is speculation, we actually did take that risk.
Okay. Just a, a question, and maybe it's off-base, it has nothing to do with this, but were we ever anticipating that we'd have excess measure A funds? And did we have, do we have other projects that are, that are going to be lost? That we won't be able to use the money for, because we're now having to use it all for these things?
You know, it was interesting, I was looking through some notes from the interim city manager, that he left me eighteen, twenty months ago. And there was a discussion by the exec staff at the time, that actually listed, identify additional flood control, control projects for the measure A monies that would be coming. And so I think there was, I think
Pulpert Creek.
Yeah, absolutely, there was, yeah.
I think that there was.
Up by the corporation yard.
I, I think there was just a, a loss of, of total understanding of the revenues and expenditures related to this. Maybe there was an over-forecast of measure A monies coming in, maybe the economy, and, and sort of what, what the recovery would look like for sales tax. Maybe that all played into it. But my perception would be that they, that there was a belief that measure A would cover all of this and more. And, and it was, I mean, the general fund backs everything we do. That's always the backing revenue source that we have. So even for, for, for our rates, for, if we were to borrow off the water and the wastewater for any kind of indebtedness, the, the general fund is always that discretionary revenue that, that cities have to be able to back anything that we do. And so when a council borrows money, has a grant, the general fund is, is, it's expected that that would be used if something happened in the, in the, some catastrophe, or some repayment issue happened. So I would hope that that would have been part of the conversation. But from our conversations, and sort of what we've read in notes, and minutes, and, and different things from staff, I believe there was a perception that measure A would cover all of this and more.
I'm coming along. I, I'm concerned that, you know, we paid it all upfront right now, that they would, I, I don't think our community, community can sustain that kind of a hit.
I don't either.
It would be nice to, to have assurances that if we ever were to get lucky and get a windfall here and there, that we'd immediately have a, or we'd have a policy that we would immediately put that money back into the reserve. That, that's where I'm really struggling. I want that reserve to be twenty-five percent, frankly, more than twenty-five percent. Is that something that you would think is reasonable and automatic? Of course, we want to get that to twenty-five percent or more as quickly as we can.
I think the council is long overdue for a general fund reserve, assigned reserve policy. And I would very much like to bring that forward as part of the budget process. The challenge is, it's, it's your own policy, and you obviously can waive it, and, and come up with reasons not to follow it. But then, as we do budgeting, we're at twenty-two percent now. And so every time we spend, and revenues don't come in as, as to where we expect, you would have to slash expenses to then continue at that twenty-five, or whatever reserve you set. You might set thirty or thirty-five, it just depends. We talked about this at the goal setting. Twenty-five percent could be your hard assigned general fund balance, and, and we could look towards an economic uncertainty fund for another ten percent. And that way, when there is, when there are economic downturns, which there always are, you wouldn't have to right away slash services. You could turn to your economic, your economic uncertainty fund, pull monies from there, your assigned general fund reserve stays solid. But we do, is, this city needs to get to a point where we have a committed number that we strive for, and we maintain. It's part of our bond rating, our credit rating, it's important. And, and I would encourage the council to, to direct staff, me, to, to bring something like that forward.
Just one final comment. I think it may be premature, because we don't know, but can you speak to the issue of sort of the potential perception in the community that these monies, this two million dollars, whatever, that two point one million dollars was misuse? Or so we were defrauded, or whatever. We don't have any evidence of that, as, as we sit here today.
Well, that's the purpose of the forensic accountant.
That's what I thought.
I don't have any evidence that there was any intent.
Okay.
But, but the idea was, when we presented this information to the council, without taking that extra step, I could never answer that question.
All right.
And so we felt it was worthwhile, and, and staff currently is reviewing proposals to hire a forensic accountant, to take it to that next step, so we can start to build this community assurance. I think right now, nationally, you'd probably see very similar distrust ratings in, in most agencies. I, I looked around California. Lou Edwards does a lot of surveys, so I checked to see where other communities were. We're pretty much in line. Americans are just frustrated with government. So some of the frustration you're seeing, that's reflected in a forty-four percent rating, positive rating for, for our government agency, is really, I think, the state, it's the feds, it's, it's sort of this feeling of, I don't trust government in general, and here's an opportunity to voice that in a survey.
No doubt.
We sort of carry the whole brunt of that response. We sort of carry the whole brunt of that response. But on the flip side, the, the citizenry certainly has reason to question, you know, things that we've done in, in years past. And it's an opportunity, a 25% reserve policy, fixing these, these, these items is certainly an opportunity to regain that trust. And I think that's very important.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I think you have direction.
Yes, I'm aboard.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
We, we practice democratic centralism.
Which one are we on, number one?
All right. That takes us to our last item. Consider opposition letter of Senate Bill 876. This is a bill that is opposed by the League of California Cities. That's how it came to our attention and I requested that the city manager put this on the agenda to see whether we could sign the letter.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Very briefly, we don't have a legislative analyst here in the city and so I rely heavily on the League of California Cities. The council receives information from the league, as does staff. This is one in particular, you know, we don't also have a legislative platform here in St. Helena, maybe something that's, it's on my to-do list, but at the very bottom. Legislative platforms help the staff recognize where the positions are for the city council and when certain pieces of legislation are proposed by our legislature. We could write letters of opposition or support based on your legislative platform. We don't do it very much because quite frankly, we don't have the staff to be able to track the legislation. However, this in particular came, and, and one of the, the main issues to it, it is about homelessness and it's, it's called the right to, to rest. The nickname that's been given is the right to rest legislation. And it basically, it's proposing that it would afford persons experiencing homelessness the right to use public spaces without discrimination based on their housing status and describe basic human and civil rights that may be exercised without being subject to criminal or civil sanctions, including the right to use and to move freely in public spaces, the right to rest in public spaces and to protect oneself from the elements, the right to eat in any public space in which having food is not prohibited, and the right to perform religious observations in public spaces as specified. The key crux to this is, we have a homelessness, homelessness is a challenge for us in California, there's no doubt about it. And there's 481 cities and 61 counties and we're all grappling with how to support our communities, including our homeless communities. It's, it's an important part of who we are as Californians. The challenge is, the state has to help us with this. Here is another well-intended piece of legislation that is an unfunded mandate that, that, that would then supersede and cut out local control. So communities over the years have thoughtfully put ordinances in place that are right for their communities. So you have 481 cities that have made decisions on how to use public property and, and how to address some of these challenges that we're seeing in our communities. And this bill would basically wipe all of that out and local control again is then taken away from cities and the state is stepping in and saying how we should run each individual city.
Without giving us any money.
Without getting, and, and there's no programming, there's no funding, there's no supportive services. It's just saying now, you can't do this and, and nothing's coming behind it. There's no solutions coming again. And so it's not a reaction to the homeless community. In fact, it's, it's an intent to support the homeless community because the message back to the legislature needs to be, come with solutions that have, come with ideas and legislation that have solutions and have funding that we in California can work together to support our homeless populations.
Okay. Any initial questions? Any public comment? Ms. Minette of McCorkle Avenue.
I just have a question. One of the pictures that Oliver Caldwell showed tonight from Lyman Park showed someone's resting on a bench. And I'm just wondering, I mean, that, the city has been very generous in, in Lyman Park with respect to this activity. And I'm wondering if there are current ordinances, and I, you know, I could look it up, but I'm just wondering if there are ordinances currently in our city that prohibit that? Or, you know, what, what this, what, what this bill would mean in terms of what we already have in place? Is it, is it an issue? Would we lose some of our local power or do we have nothing in place? You know, so, I mean, those are my concerns.
All right. Ms. Phillips, do you have any further comment?
I did not have, this, this came to us right before the agenda was being prepared and I did not have the opportunity to review what St. Helena has in place. It's really about the bigger issue of, of supporting each other in the state of California and asking for, for a statewide solution rather than individually looking what each of us have and whether this works for us or not.
All right. Any further public comment? I'll close the public comment. Any council discussion?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it's important to assert local control when you can. I, I think this measure is very poorly written, just as a lawyer looking at it, it's kind of a mess frankly. I understand the intent of it. I'm not sure if it was ever intended to solve homelessness. It probably should, should not have really gone down that, that path. And maybe the objections are a little bit overkill. I mean, in my fundamental heart of hearts, I don't think we should criminalize somebody who happens to be homeless. And I think maybe that was the original intent, but then it sort of got dragged into something entirely different. I see the difference between someone who's homeless, sitting in a park, minding their own business, and somebody who's homeless, sitting in a park and, and potentially violating laws, doing things that are against law. So for me, there's a distinction, just like race, sex and other things, someone should not face a criminal penalty because they don't have a place to live. So that, to me, should be addressed. I frankly, don't think that this measure does that very well. So, I mean, those are the concerns I have. It's, you know, we, we should be able to address the actions that are legal and not the person who happens to be homeless, so. So my point is, I think I would support the letter, Mayor.